Mayor Pro Tem Chaffee.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Here.
Councilmember Florrie.
Here.
Councilmember Seaborn.
Here.
I've asked Mayor Pro Tem Doug Chaffee to lead us in the invocation. Would you please rise?
When I have an opportunity, I like to use the unison prayer that was created by the Fullerton Emergency Service, now known as Pathways of Hope. Eternal and loving God, we come together out of a wide diversity of backgrounds, traditions, and experiences. We join together as members of your human family in the faith that each person is precious in your sight and deserves respect, dignity, and necessities of survival in our community. We pray for your wisdom and guidance in our decisions here today. They may truly reflect your justice and never-ending hope, love, and compassion for all. Amen.
And we have an unscheduled treat here in Girl Scout Troop Number 2897 who will come forward to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Would everybody, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Marquez and I go to Laguna Road School.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Romero and I go to Pacific Drive School.
Hi, I'm Aleah Marquez and I go to Laguna Road School.
I'm Julia Ferberg and I go to Golden Hill.
I'm Francesca Lemus and I go to Fern Drive.
We have this evening also a proclamation for Better Hearing and Speech Month. I have William Schenk here from the Fullerton Hearing Center. Yes, Mr. Schenk. Perhaps a few words from you before I make the presentation on this special month.
Well, my name is Bill Schenk. I'm with Fullerton Hearing Center. We've been in practice in the city of Fullerton for 39 years since 1974. I'm a life member of the Hearing Health Practitioners of California in the leadership of International Hearing Society, and I'm the chairman of the National Board Certification of Hearing Instrument Sciences, and I'm proud to represent Fullerton in all of my travels representing my industry and hearing healthcare professionals. And I'm thrilled that the city of Fullerton is once again proclaimed May as Better Speech and Hearing Month and to join the rest of the country in this proclamation.
Thank you. And allow me just to punch a few of the statistics here very quickly. Whereas hearing loss is one of the nation's leading handicapping disabilities affecting an estimated 20 million Americans, and whereas hearing impairments can adversely affect an individual's ability to function effectively on the job, in school, and in social situations, and whereas hearing impairments strike persons of all ages and all economic situations, and whereas many impairments could be avoided by following simple hearing conservation measures, and whereas following such hearing conservation measures is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, and whereas speech impairments affect an estimated 2 million Americans, therefore be it resolved that I, Bruce Whitaker, Mayor of the city of Fullerton, in behalf of the entire city council, proclaim the month of May 2013 as Better Hearing and Speech Month in the city of Fullerton and urge all our citizens to follow common sense hearing health procedures. Thank you. I will defer here to Chief of Police Dan Hughes, who has a presentation regarding the Special Olympics.
Mayor and members of city council, Dan Hughes, your police chief. I'm here to announce a really exciting adventure that the police department is doing with Special Olympics and to announce that on Thursday, May 16th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., we are going to be partnering with Special Olympics for a tip-a-cop program. And so we will be serving at a restaurant. We will be the waiters for the Heroes Bar and Grill. From that time period, all tips during that time period will be donated to Special Olympics. There are other downtown bars and restaurants that are also associated with this event in some way or another, including Bourbon Street, Florentine's, Mulberry Street, the Slide Guard, and Branican's. And so we're very excited that we're partnering with Special Olympics. Tonight, we also have a special guest with me, which is Stephanie Hardy, who is here with her father, Richard. Stephanie lives in Placentia and has been a Special Olympics athlete for the past 35 years, and she is now one of their spokespersons. We call her, I think, Special Ambassador. And so she is here, and she is a recipient of winning several medals in Special Olympics. And so I've asked her just to come and give a brief description of what being a Special Olympics athlete is and what she's enjoyed about that. So you would welcome Stephanie Hardy, please, to come up.
Thank you for introduction. I just wanted to thank you for introduction. Thank you for city council for letting me sorry. Let me speak here today. I have been a Special Olympics athlete for 35 years. It is not nice to ask a lady her age. Special Olympics is my way to be in sports. I have been, I have done track and field, soccer, gymnastics, soccer, softball, alpine, equestrian, and now volleyball and golf. In 2013, I was participate in World Games in Dublin, in Ireland. These are my medals, and I won three gold medals. Equestrian event. Special Olympics give us, give, Special Olympics give me and other others with intellectual disabilities the chance to do a lot of things we may not able to do. It gives us away from TV and video games and into sports. It is just not competition, but it's all year-round program, training programs. It is open to all athletes or six years old and up. There are no age limit. For many athletes, including me, Special Olympics is our recreation and self social life. All of my friends are in Special Olympics as Special Olympics gold messengers get to go out to meet people like you guys. It is, it gives us self-esteem, confidence, and responsibilities. Special Olympics will not exist without support of the community like you people, like you guys. You may know that Special Olympics is free to all athletes. That's why my, that's why your support is, that's why your support is so important. Especially important is the please. Especially important is the please tip-a-cop and the torch run. It is also much fun to work with the police officers, employees. At the tip-a-cop, we get to, we get to talk to all the people in restaurant when they are in good mood. It, it's fun to sell the torch run t-shirts and see their support for Special Olympics. I got to run the torch a few years ago. I almost got killed, killed me. I, I am not much of a runner. I let my horse, Lacy, do that for me. Thank you for letting me speak today and let me, thank you, thank you for letting me to speak here today and tell you how much, how important Special Olympics is to me and thousand of other, another with intellectual disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, and mayor and members of city council. Again, we're looking forward to serving you and all of our community at one of these restaurants on the 16th. And then the torch will actually be ran through the city of Fullerton on the 31st. And much like Stephanie, I will, I'm not much of a runner, but I'm going to endure it as well. And so it will be going from Harbor, we will be handed off from the city of Anaheim. We'll go down Harbor to Chapman, and Chapman to State College, up around the college, and we'll end up at Chapman in Placentia, hopefully. And so we invite all to come out that day, too. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. We also this evening have a presentation on behalf of Habitat for Humanity of Orange County. We have Alex Osborne, Neighborhood Revitalization Manager for Habitat of Humanity, Orange County. Mr. Osborne.
That's a hard act to follow, so I apologize if mine isn't quite so impactful. So good evening, mayor and city council. It's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk to you and to the general public of Fullerton about what Habitat is doing here in Fullerton. As you know, Habitat for Humanity is a nonprofit organization based on housing. We're dedicated to ending substandard housing and building strong communities. Probably most of you are aware of that. Many in the public aren't that I get to know. Traditionally, Habitat has followed a practical, simple, straightforward model. We raise money, build homes, and sell them to low-income qualifying families. Working with donated funds and donated labor, Habitat enables motivated individuals to have the opportunity to build and purchase a simple, decent home. It's good for the family. Purchasing a home provides, promotes self-reliance through homeownership and creates stability and permanence at home. It's good for the community. Habitat homes are generally some of the best-looking homes on the block, usually crime-free, and it's good for the city as homeownership adds to the property tax base. Our mantra is simple, decent, affordable housing. Every Habitat family invests in their home by completing 250 hours of sweat equity to help to build their own home, as well as they pay 1% down payment and a zero-interest mortgage for their home. So they're invested both physically and financially. But that's actually not what I'm here to talk about tonight. As you all know, we have 11 homes on Valencia in the Richmond neighborhood that some of you, I'm sure, were involved physically building and definitely involved in other ways. I'm here to talk tonight about the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative and the great work that the residents of the Woodcrest community, this community on the south side of Fullerton, are doing. Because over the years, Habitat, we've seen the positive effects that a family can feel due to a stable home. We've wanted to expand our impact by going further and broadening our work to work with the entire community. So last year, we began the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, and we're doing it in one neighborhood in all of Orange County, and that's right here in Fullerton, in the Woodcrest neighborhood. What it is, it's a holistic, place-based, community development initiative. I'm thinking, what does that mean? The purpose is to work with residents, to empower them to enhance the quality of life and the condition of their neighborhood in any way they seem fit. Over the past year, I've met so many great people here in Fullerton. Before, I hadn't spent much time in the city, but met great people in the city and other nonprofits, churches, universities, and mostly here in the community. And so instead of me telling you about the great work that is going on in that neighborhood, I've invited a resident to come up and talk about that. I'll introduce Chuck Holm, resident of the Woodcrest community in Fullerton.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Charles Holm, and I love the city of Fullerton. I've been a resident since 1986, about 27 years. I live across the street from Woodcrest Elementary School with my daughter Naomi and her three children, Destiny, Elijah, and Jerry. My association with Habitat for Humanity and Neighbor Works of Orange County began approximately 10 months ago when Alex approached me about painting our house. I agreed to their terms and have been involved with helping them perform various projects and activities in and around the neighborhood. With their help and church volunteers, their organization, their organizations were able to help us de-junk our house, and we had a lot of stuff. So the two of those big giant bins, the big ones, the real big ones. They also invited me to participate in a resident leadership training workshop because I'm an active member of my grandkids' school parent-teacher association. Among other things, we have done community cleanups, have attempted to start a parent-led crossing guard program, attended parenting workshops, have an organized neighborhood watch, and have presented a resident-run water-quality community meeting, which had to do with that pump that was put up and now it's down. If you are interested in learning more and would like to get involved, not only the city council, but you're in here, or the city of Fullerton, just get in touch with Alex Osborne at Habitat for Humanity of Orange County, or Carla Lopez Del Rio at Neighbor Works of Orange County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chuck. And it wouldn't be complete without a couple of words from Principal Hilda Flores, principal of Woodcrest Elementary, who is a relatively new principal but has come in with full energy and is doing just as much or more than I or the residents are doing to revitalize this neighborhood. She's one of many working really hard, so, Hilda.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed council. I'd love to take an opportunity to brag about my community to you. I'm honored to be able to work with our partners, with Neighbor Works, Orange County, and Habitat for Humanity, who have been outstanding support to my community. But I'm even more proud of the community that has come out in support of changing what's happening in the Woodcrest community. Through our efforts and through their collaboration, they've come to a consensus that they are the change that's going to happen in their community. And I occasionally have to just get out of their way in order to make what they want happen, and that is a powerful, powerful thing. It's not me demanding that we provide the best for our students and we provide a safe community, it's them demanding it of me, and that only energizes our efforts even greater. So I wanted to come tonight to show my support for my community because great things are happening in the Woodcrest community, and it's all due to our partners that are working to empower our parent leaders. And I know that as time goes on, we're going to see even greater attributes to our community that we'll be glad to share with you. And we encourage you to come out to the Woodcrest community and see our sleepy little school behind the park and Target and all the wonderful things that are happening. And we only expect exciting things in the future, and we hope to have all the support from the city council as we embark on great efforts. Thank you.
So from painting houses to fixing houses to revitalizing parks, helping out with neighborhood watches, parenting classes, joining with Parks and Rec To Do After School programs, a lot of great things are happening in that neighborhood. I've seen, you know, several of you out there, and I really appreciate, and not only I, but if you'll see, actually, could I have all those that are here from the Woodcrest community stand up that have ever been to one of the meetings? This is a large contingent, many of whom are attending resident leadership workshops, learning to be leaders in their own community. So thank you for your time and your support, and we'll keep you updated on how progress goes. Thanks.
Alex, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you. I was out there for the first couple of meetings, and my schedule has taken me away from being able to attend those, but I just wanted to thank you for facilitating those meetings and helping the community rally with themselves to, you know, put their best foot forward and to make these changes occur. You've done a phenomenal job, and I surely appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
I will now turn the floor over to Mayor Pro Tem Doug Chaffee, who has a presentation for Volunteer of the Month. Jim Alexander, would you come up here for a minute? And there may be a couple of helpers with you that should join.
Okay.
Would you, well, I see a couple of people right there, maybe even those three people.
Were all three up here?
Well, I
What about Al and Joanne? My wife's a child.
Go ahead.
Al, Joanne?
Okay. Would you take that off, please, the bow? Yeah, you get the bow, you can recycle that. And would you two help out by opening this, please?
I get the bow, then the gun round. That doesn't seem quite fair.
Do I have to save the paper?
It's up to you.
I got it up.
What did you think of that?
I look straight in the back. What's the front say?
Now, why am I doing this? Because I want to make an example out of you, of course. You know, Al, you have been a charter member and past president of the Fullerton Sunrise Rotary. It is a special project that you helped to spearhead called the Art Bus to provide art in the schools to, all the arts for all the kids. You also served as a member of the elementary school oversight committee to make sure that the schools are upgraded and within budget. And you've been a longtime volunteer with the Women's Transitional Living Center and the Crittenon Services. And Joanne, you've been also a longtime volunteer with both Crittenon and the Women's Transitional Living Center, and you have even been president of the Board of Directors of Crittenon, and you've received the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Women's Transitional Living Center. You've served on the Muckin Dollar Foundation Board. In fact, you're a former president of the Muckin Dollar Center Circle. Because I want to get out of here by midnight, I'm not going to give you everything. And you've both been very active in community outreach through the First Presbyterian Church. If I were to add up all the volunteer days and hours that you two have performed, I think I could come up with about 100 years' worth where you've been helping, where you've been helping to enrich the lives of Fullerton people with special needs. Now, how long have you guys been married? How long have you been married?
Almost 60 years. Yeah, very
I see. That 60 years with all with one guy?
Yes.
Wow, that's really special. Well, you know, volunteers, it's been said, the reason they're not paid is not because they're worthless, it's because they are priceless. And that is what you two represent, volunteering at its finest. Now, that sign will go on a parking spot outside City Hall there, and you can come down if you really want to anytime in the month, this month, and you'll have a special parking space reserved for you. Yeah, I know, that's very overwhelming. No, it doesn't get you a handicap space or anything like that, but you're welcome to come down anytime that you like.
Thank you so much.
It's a pleasure. And, Mr. Mayor, would you join us for a picture? And Jim, if you want to, you can bring your wife, you can come up in this one, too. No, okay, you're going to pass. All right. We'll put this up outside for you. You don't have to do any more work. Before we proceed to public comments, I earlier failed to ask the city attorney whether or not we had items to report out of our closed session.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there are two items to report out in our closed session this evening. With regard to the closed session agenda, item number one was a conference with our legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation related to the California Department of Finance's determination on the non-housing due diligence review pursuant to Government Code Sections 549, 56.9, subsection B. This has to do with the state mandated dissolution of the redevelopment agency where the state is demanding monies from unencumbered Development Housing Fund to be transferred to the state of California. They had demanded 16.9 million They had demanded $16.9 million, and through staff negotiations, we've been able to reduce that to $14.2 million. And by unanimous 4-0 decision of council, it was recommended to pay the $14.2 million to the state. And again, this is unencumbered housing development fund money from the agency reserve and does not come from the public fund. The second matter, Mr. Mayor and members of council, was item number five on the closed session agenda, having to do with council, a conference with legal counsel pursuant to the case of Harriet Henninger et al. versus the city of Fullerton. This case involved the unfortunate death of Fullerton High School beloved teacher Jeffrey Rupp, who was, who died as a result of an accident that occurred on January 19th, 2011, riding his Harley Davidson motorcycle. After very many months of negotiations, we're in council for the plaintiff demanded $3.12 million, the city has agreed to settle this case in exchange for a dismissal with prejudice of the entire action for the sum of $375,000. The Orange County case number is 30-2011-00506572. Mr. Mayor, there are no other items to report out from closed session.
Thank you for that somewhat delayed report, I appreciate it. We are now prepared, the council is prepared, to hear public comments on items not appearing on this evening's agenda. And I would ask that you check in with the city clerk to fill out a blue speaker slip, and she will determine the order. Please keep your comments civil, address them only to the council. And Madam Clerk, how many requests do we have?
We have 14 speaker slips, and if number one will come to the podium, and two through five, would please line up.
My name is Jason Martinez, and, sorry, can I get this up? Talk fast. I would first like to thank Mayor Whitaker and your wife for taking this time to speak to citizens in the city because you're care and committed to the city and its affairs. Next, I'd like to thank Corporal Capra for his work with the homeless as a liaison officer, Captain Hughes, for your dedication to the people of Fullerton, and lastly, O.C. for the supervisors. First is the proposed homeless shelter on State College Boulevard at Commonwealth Avenue. Homeless shelter, the homeless near the Hunts Branch and all around Fullerton really need a shelter. I do support the shelter and its help and support it will give these men, women, and children. Speaking of children, do we think about the youngsters who are out of homeless, sleeping on the streets with their families, having to be so hungry because they can't afford food, not going to schools because they're discriminated? This is a problem they worry about the kids at the school across the street, but do they really think about the family with kids in the park? This is a contradiction that has led people to think the term homeless only applies to adults, but children and newborns can also be homeless. I strongly believe in this getting the shelter for them and other people that need it will make a change in their lives for the better. I think it's now time as we as a city make this happen. No more dreaming, it's time to get in the fast lane and start setting up the shelter. When the shelter is set up, one of the things that the clients will do will store their bags and will not have to carry them around everywhere. One thing I learned about criminal justice in high school is that you always check the person first for their belongings, it's a rule in policing and common sense, because what if the person has something on them that is harmful and anything in their bag can injure the officers? Just like in a previous case two years ago where a man, I'm sure everyone has heard of him, Kelly Thomas, where his stuff in his bag aroused suspicion, bags can kill. My third point is East Valley View slash Harbor needs a camera and/or radar due to the fact that many vehicles run the signal that has just turned red or almost red. I live near an intersection, every time I cross the corner, I look to make sure there's no cars, and especially at this corner. What if someone was crossing across the street from the Ralphs or vice versa at Hillcrest Park was run over? It was a pleasure to speak this evening. Thank you, Mayor Whitaker and City Council, have a great night.
Thank you.
Honored to the Mayor, City Council, my name is Raymond McKinley. I would like to speak in support of the proposed homeless shelter and recreational center here in State College and Commonwealth in Fullerton, California. My experience with homeless community here in Fullerton, California, has been unique. Through it, I have earned a greater understanding of the phenomenon of being an indigent. The community is being offered a place for its homeless residents to obtain resources such as, but not limited to, transitional housing for those who qualify, housing options for those who don't, continuing education, employment opportunity, spiritual development, addiction rehabilitation services, physical health services, medical, visual, dental treatment, and insurance. The consumers of this facility will have a clean, comfortable place to get used to living again, a place to shower and feel human before presenting oneself to the world for the day, does a substantial amount of good for personal motivation, a place to obtain valuable information that will improve one's well-being, a place that will help the consumer develop awareness of the deeper issues that are hindering them from progress, a place to seek solution to the dilemmas of life. If such a place had a chance to exist, I would support it. I support the proposed homeless shelter for our homeless residents because as a community, we should help those who can't help themselves, and we should offer assistance to those who have come to find themselves alone. We have somehow forgotten our connection to each other and the universe, neither those of we who believe in God or those that don't believe in God have the luxury to ignore our responsibility to be our brothers' keepers. Either we who believe in God or those who don't believe in God would simply be inhumane in neglecting any portion of our community. To forego the opportunity to provide a clean and safe place for our homeless residents would be exactly so, inhumane. In summary, I, Raymond A. McKinley, am here to support the proposed homeless shelter. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Again, I'm here to speak about the shelter. First of all, my name is Curtis Gamble. I'm here to speak about the shelter on 301 South State College Boulevard in Fullerton. The shelter, again, is very much needed in the community. I've, I drove bus for 14 years, and I mentioned about the shelter to many of my bus driver friends, we have about 800 bus drivers here in Orange County, and this is what we've been needing for such a long time, because many of the buses are serving as shelters right now. You know, I'm just repeating kind of a little bit what I said last time, but that's what's really happening. The buses are used very much as shelters, and the drivers, you know, they're trying to do a good job, get passengers to and from work on time. Having this shelter, it would make it easier on many of the drivers in the community. They can also come down to the shelter because it would only be maybe two blocks away from their division, Division 6 over in Anaheim. They would come down and help out. It's better to help the people in the shelter than to try to help them on the bus while you're driving. You know how difficult it is to drive in Orange County. So anyway, this again is just a reminder to everybody that it's very important to get the shelter. And in getting this shelter, I like to say this, too, it kind of reminds me of when I was in the military on the USS Missouri, the big battleship. I was with 1,300 guys. We all lived in the quarters together, and, you know, we made it work for three years without any major problems, and as a matter of fact, it was great. So I think, again, that shelter could be basically a lot like the USS Missouri, the big battleship. We can live and do a lot of things on our own, you know, like we can fix our own meals and go look for jobs and all the other things that we need to do. We, you know, we can do it together. Anyway, I'd just like to thank you guys for listening once more, and again, let's get the shelter. Thank you, please.
Mayor Whitaker, Mayor Protam Chaffee, council members, city staff. My name is Bob Hayden, I am chairman of the Open Coyote Hills Committee, a diverse group of citizens in our fair city and community that have been collaborating with landowner and city staff and others to try to come together with a sensible and balanced plan for West Coyote Hills that does not create a negative impact financially or otherwise for our city. We have been very respectful and very polite in our approach, and we will continue to do so. But we want you to know that we're here to support the city council and city staff's efforts in whatever it may take to bring to resolution and to a solution so that we can finally move on to other things in the city. Obviously, you have high demands on your time with the infrastructure burdens that we face between water issues, sewer issues, electrical issues, road issues, the millions of dollars is just astronomical, I'm sure, and this is one project that hopefully we can, through the process, find a way to bring to solution, a permanent solution, so that we're not continuing to debate this and discuss this 10 and 20 years from now, maybe after some of us are long gone even. It would be nice to bring this to resolution for our community in a beneficial and productive way. I also am aware that there are people that will come before you and demand, will try to intimidate and do other things, and I am appreciative that this council has shown a strong desire and backbone to work towards collaborative solutions and not be intimidated by those that might come and try to use fear tactics and other emotional tags and misleading information to try to sway your opinion off of a course that is beneficial for our total community. Know that even though we are not always vocal, we do not always come here and waste time in front of you, know that you have support, and know that we will have your back as you work for, in the best interest of all Fullertonians, to find a solution that is permanent and beneficial and will long last and be a great tribute to our city, whatever that may be. Thank you for your time.
We are on speaker number five. You guys are so good today, I think you're all lined up already, but in case six through 10 isn't, now would be your time to come up.
Good evening, my name is Angela Lindstrom, I live in Fullerton. I'm here again to speak on Measure W, the 2012 referendum on the council's approval of Chevron's development plan for West Coyote Hills. I and many others have spoken several times since the election urging you to do the right thing, follow through on your voters' mandate to overturn all development approvals, that should happen with a successful referendum. Let me remind you that 61% of voters voted to overturn the council's development approvals. Today, you have not overturned the development approvals, to date you have not even communicated your intent to take any action even when asked repeatedly. It's been six months, we deserve to know what you have done and intend to do. In February, you said you needed more time to become educated on the issue. I've heard since then also that this matter is just not a priority. At this point, it's very difficult for me to interpret your lack of response and lack of communications to voters as anything other than intentional. This behavior is a perfect setup, unfortunately, to allow Chevron an easy reapproval for development come this November. Your lack of clarity on exactly where we stand on West Coyote Hills is your way, I think, of silently defying the voters' will, unfortunately. I expect that when Chevron comes back in November to reapply for a development approval, you will then let us know exactly where we stand, which is pretty much as if the referendum never happened. What's worse, by that time, you will have deprived the public of any recourse on this West Coyote Hills matter. My comments here tonight probably won't change your ways, but putting this in front of the public is an important first step to holding you accountable to our votes.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker, council members, my name is Ira McAb, I'm a longtime resident. Well, what I was going to say is what Angela said, although she's a lot more eloquent than me, but my points are pretty much the same on there. What I would like to add on there is, after the vote and that Measure W was defeated, there was a long silence from this council all the way into probably January or February. When you, Mayor Whitaker, announced to the council that the development of Coyote Hills for this year is dead, that was a true and accurate statement, but it was also a disingenuous statement, and it was not a complete statement. What you did not say to the audience here and to the city of Fullerton, which have been transferred by, published by Fullerton Observer, was that the development agreement was not dead, it was just strictly dormant for a year, and by doing nothing, after a year, it would become effective again, and Chevron on day one, one year post day one, could start using their road graders to do the development, and they would not have to come back to the city council. And city council, oh, they have a development agreement, there's nothing we can do. You did not say that, and when you said it is dead for a year, you were intentionally misleading the people of Fullerton because you did not give a complete answer. I urge you to terminate the development agreement, and if Chevron wants to continue to build, they have to start the whole process again, reapply from day one, do a new EIR, which is, the one that they submitted, is seriously flawed, but you chose to ignore that. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, Joe Fels, I was given an email by Doug Chaffee a couple of days ago that I could speak on the closed session agenda item regarding the Fullerton City Lights. Is that correct? I can make it up?
Actually, I intended that you speak before the closed session, but it's okay because that's not on our agenda now, and I think you can speak on that topic if you wish.
Okay. This is regarding the Fullerton City Lights Apartments, the John Stewart Company, and the city of Fullerton. I am Joe Stewaz, CEO, Chairman of Board for the Tenants Association at Fullerton City Lights. I'm not here to advise the city whether or not to go ahead with the closed session agenda item. I'm here to advise and inform the city officials as to the performance of the John Stewart Company since August 1st, 2012, which is the date the John Stewart Company commenced management duties at Fullerton City Lights. From day one, the John Stewart Company promised certain items to the city and the Tenants Association. Those promises were never realized. In the past nine months, I have received over 40 separate complaints regarding the very poor treatment of our tenants. When the fire happened on December 6, 2012, the John Stewart Company promised the displaced tenants that their costs for being displaced would be reimbursed to them. They even had to pay rent while living at the hotel. Those displaced costs were never taken care of. And when confronted about these issues, the supervisor for the John Stewart Company lied to me about the promises that were made. Now they want new conditions to the loan specifications and a new lease slash rules regulations for our tenants. I'm asking the city to take into consideration all factors, including the poor performance of onsite management and maintenance personnel. Two weeks ago, I made several phone calls to Vice President Lori Horn of the John Stewart Company. Since places no phone calls, those phone calls were never returned. I'm not sure that I can call the John Stewart Company a professionally managed company. I speak to Joe Fels on a regular basis and try to keep him informed as to what's going on at the property, so I just wanted to share my thoughts with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, city council members, for letting me say a few words. My name is Dave Hunsbein, and I've lived in Fullerton many years. On next Monday, on the 13th of May, in the California Superior Court, the county of Orange, the lawsuit brought against the people of Fullerton by the Pacific Coast Homes, which is owned by the Chevron Oil Company, was to have a hearing before Judge Robert Moss. On May 13th, that was the fifth delay of this hearing. Now papers have been filed asking for another delay. This is the sixth delay, a delay until 5 August of this year. The first few delays were understandable. Referendum W to save the Coyote Hills was on the ballot, and the outcome was of interest to this lawsuit, also the election of new city council members a possibility at that time. But for each delay, the lawyers have said they were continuing their discussions in good faith and believe a potential resolution of their dispute could be found. During this sixth extension of time, the lawyers still believe that will provide sufficient time for completion of such discussions. That is what they said for the first five delays. The strange part of it is this lawsuit and the need for all these extended discussions, that this suit really has no merit. that this suit really has no merit. The citizens legally voted against the project. Why are you wasting taxpayers' money on lawyers sitting around for years talking about extensions? What is the real reason for having six delays? Something is going on behind your closed doors? The public has the right to know. I wish you would please tell us. Thank you.
We are on speaker number 10, so if you are 11 through 14, please come line up.
Good evening to the city council. Standing before you is a very angry citizen. A week ago Wednesday, I left for therapy at 12:15. I'm having a critter problem, and I left an eradicator alarm going, and when I came home from therapy at 10 minutes to 5, my gate was askew, and I go, "Oh," and then I looked over and a barrier at the north side of my house was torn down, and I listened for that alarm, and no alarm was heard. I go in the house, and sure enough, somebody had gotten into the house and shut off the alarm. I immediately, and I mean immediately, thought it was the individual that vandalized my real and personal property for eight years, and I thought, "Oh, expletive, he's starting in again." And I got on the phone, I called the police department. I had sense enough to ask, was there any report given for this address today? There was no report, and so I said, "I need an officer and a fingerprint kit to come out before dark," because I don't want this to go on anymore. I can't handle it. And he goes over and talks to the gentleman, and I go, "Oh, that's going to aggravate him, and he's going to retaliate again, start retaliating again." And come to find out, it was the fire department and code enforcement that had come, broken into my house, left absolutely no word that they had come in. I called the police department, bothering them for no good reason, and all they would have had to do was put a door hanger or something saying, "We had to come in. If you have any questions, give us a call." And so, please, have a notice put up when you have to go into a person's house without a fire, and so they know not to call anybody unnecessarily. And that put me in an aggravation for five days because I worried constantly about being retaliated against. So just one little door hanger would have been fine. I would have understood. Been a little upset because they didn't put the barrier back, but one little door hanger would have caused a lot of less problem for me and the police department. So, please do something. Don't ever walk in, break into somebody's house without letting them know in some way, shape, or form that you had to come in. I mean, if there was a fire, somebody knows. That's, you know, you don't have to leave word. But when there was no problem to speak of, and I was a torn-up mess for five days, it took me that long to get back to normal, and I'm still living in fear that he might retaliate again. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I hope you look into putting in door hangers. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and anyone that's listening in the audience. My name is Joan Briano. I am the site administrator of the Fullerton Informer blog. The purpose of my visit tonight again is to discuss the dangers of the wireless classrooms that are being rolled out throughout the Fullerton School District and potentially through the Joint Union High School District. I've been trying to get the attention of the administrators of these administrations to look at the risks, the potential health hazards that have been documented in the medical literature, with the amount of exposure that's going to be proposed in the classroom setting applications of the rollout of this technology. I've noticed that there's been a lot of talk and buzz about raising autism awareness in this community. Autism has been around not nearly as long as environmental pollutants, not nearly as long as vaccines, not nearly as long as any of us can remember. There weren't any autistic kids in my block when I was younger. We had 35 kids on a little cul-de-sac. Something else is going on, folks, with these syndromes. It is not more diagnostic equipment, it is not more diagnosis. Something is going on in the environment. There was a recent Wall Street Journal article that was published recently about autism and how metals were implicated as a possible contributor, and iron was, interestingly enough, found to be a benefit in preventing it. The emissions of iPads, iPhones, wireless phones, cell phones, wireless game controllers, and your microwave oven all emit in the 2.45 gigahertz spectrum of the electromagnetic Iron has a very unique ability, specifically the carbonal iron form that is prescribed to pregnant women as a microwave absorber. What I'm trying to get at is that there is more going on than what we're looking at. These frequency emissions are the elephant in the room that no school administrator is willing to even respond to me on. I've been to several meetings, not one person from the Fullerton School District has reached out to me to address these health or safety concerns. They're simply ignoring me, probably at the behest of their attorneys. I'm here to inform the community that the Fullerton Informer is going to be a platform for scientific information to be disseminated to the public so parents can make an informed choice about what they subject their children to in the classroom and at home with respect to Wi-Fi in the home, cordless phones in the home, cell phones in the hands of these children, and the like. People need to understand that there's a trillion-dollar industry that's heading right for your children's laps, and I know everyone in this room has a child or a grandchild, so we're all going to be affected. Thank you.
Sean Payton, I'm going to be brief. This is a brief public service announcement. Number eight on the agenda is the water rate increase. I'm not here to speak on the merits of that right now. I understand the purpose of public comments, but I do want people in the audience that intend to protest that, they need to know that if you do wish to protest, the protest has to be in writing. I have prepared a blank form for you to fill out if you do intend to protest. Just see me, you can fill it out, hand it to Lucinda before you speak, and then your protest will be formally lodged. Otherwise, you can speak here, but it's not going to be formally lodged. So I'll finish the rest of my comments when the water comes up on the agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Shelley Ziliak, and I am a homeless advocate. First and foremost, I'm a child advocate, and so I came tonight to talk about the Fullerton vision, and that's to keep everybody safe, and I have the little flyer. And I'm trying to figure out how a homeless shelter being placed 400 feet from Commonwealth School will make Fullerton, you know, healthy and safe. That doesn't match up. Anyway, I wanted to share some new information for you, and you haven't quite heard this information. Everything in the Register and Observer and the Tribune is like pro-homeless, and we know we need it, and I'm a total advocate, but the placement is so serious. I have some information here. Florida Key Largo News, crime reports nearly doubled near homeless shelter within six New York Daily News, 34-year-old man murdered his sister, found two weeks later in a homeless shelter. Modesto Bee, man stabbed at Modesto homeless shelter. Houston Police aggravated kidnapping and child assault of a 12-year-old girl. And it goes on and on, and the point I'm trying to make is, it's not something to snap your fingers and say, "It's going to go away." It's not going to go away. It's going to complicate the issue of Fullerton. Fullerton is no longer going to be a Fullerton city of education. It will be, in my opinion, it's just my opinion, in six months, Fullerton skid row. We don't want that for Fullerton. It needs to be placed in an area where there are no children. The impact is so dangerous. So I really, really ask you to think twice about allowing it to come into that area where the children, and my daughter graduated from Pacific Christian College. Had she been there where there's a homeless shelter around the corner, I would not have said, "You can go to the dorms." People looking at Fullerton are going to look at that also when they send their kids to college. So please, the Fullerton Superintendent of Elementary School, I gave you a copy, also said he does not want it in Fullerton, in any of the schools, not Commonwealth or any of them, and I have a copy for everybody and the mayor, and I want to thank you for the time. You've heard me talk and talk and talk, and you probably think I'm done, probably not. So I'm not going to go away, and I really urge you to think carefully about this decision. So the copy from Dr. Pletka, Dr. Bob, is on the back of this little report here, so thank you so much for your time.
It's good to see you again. I'd be surprised. Hi, Jennifer, Jan, Joe. I really have a lot of faith in you, and I have a feeling on this Coyotes thing, you're going to do the right thing. Past, passed, in the past, councils have promised to save Coyote Hills, and I know in your heart you want to keep it for us, for our park, to beautify our city, more trees. Okay, I know you're going to do the right thing. You're going to ignore the big money this time. You promised. It was a vote. It was a vote. I have faith in voting. I used to love to vote. Okay, I don't know if I love it anymore. I don't know if it matters anymore. I have faith in the USA way, okay, and I hope it'll come back, okay? Now, you guys did a great job on this weekend. You had the Railroad Days thing, and it was awesome. I had a great time, and I looked at all the little trains and all the little people, and I had a really fun day, and I'm happy about that. And I'm also happy that you had toilets there. You know, toilets is an issue. It's an issue in our town. It's not only an issue for homeless, it's an issue for elderly. It's an issue for mothers that are potty trained. Toilets are a big deal, okay? Now, you can figure out a way. You know, you can get the businesses together and make a community bathroom. There's all kinds of ways you can find ways to make bathrooms, especially in your parking structures, and our trains, our people are coming in on the trains, they need to find a bathroom. Anyway, that's about bathrooms and code enforcement. Whoa. I've had issues with code enforcement in the past in another city. I know it's necessary, but come on, you've got to relax a little. There are big things and there are little things, and I just, I really could go on. I could write a book about code enforcement, so end of that. The cell towers, I have been talking against cell towers for a long time around children, and I think this man, this gentleman is, I'm proud that he's standing up and talking to you. I'm proud that the citizens of this city are finally starting to talk and saying the way they feel and what they want voted for our city. Thank you.
Members of the city council, Chief Dan Hughes, and city staff, I've been working at a house about two blocks away from here on West Whiting Avenue, and I have to say, Dan's done, he's very respectful to people, he's done an awesome job turning this department around. One of the things that bothered me during the elections, there were signs out there by somebody running for council that were basically chastising Dan Hughes, and the signs were posted right next to council member's signs. Up down Harbor Boulevard, I saw some down Chapman, and it bothered me because, you know, he'd been acting chief for six months, and the former council should have appointed, should have given him the post chief of police within the first six months, not waited a year, and other people in city staff should have made that happen. You know, they, that, I mean, I wouldn't have felt good about that, seeing signs out like that. You know, it's wrong, and the city needs to pass some codes prohibiting that type of action during an election. It's wrong. You know, I talked to a, ran into a detective and talked to him, and he agreed with me that it was wrong, and that he told me that several people not on this council were basically promoting this type of attitude, and it's wrong. You know, Dan's done, unfortunately, he's not here to hear it, he's done an awesome job. He's helped me a lot over there. We've had people, you know, breaking into the house, basically sleeping there at night, going into a shed, just a lot of things. And he, just yesterday, he had a lieutenant come out, and today he had him come out with the homeless officers, and one of them had been there before on an individual that lives a couple doors down. We've all got together and tried to deal with this, and he's done, he's done an awesome job turning this department around. I want to say one other thing, that you guys need to go on record opposing the Public Utilities Commission, making you and me and everybody here, including the city, pay for Edison's mistakes with the nuclear reactor down in Santa Elfray. They want us to foot their bill, $2.3 billion, and be put on our bills. It's wrong. Go on record now before it's too late and oppose what the PUC wants to do. You know, the federal government just yesterday hit, and last week, hit Pacific Gas and Electric, which is the gas company, with a $3.2 billion fine for the explosion in Santa Elfray. So why should we support Edison for their $2.3 billion? It doesn't, it's not right. It doesn't look right now. You know, they're going to hit the city, everybody, with this monstrous bill. Go on record and oppose it. Thank you.
I currently live here in Fullerton. I lost my job approximately five years ago, and ever since then, I have struggled. I am now homeless. I have been for multiple years. I have recently been informed by a bill that has passed in legislation in Sacramento, AB 5, the Homeless Bill of Rights. It also states in a few things here that we're the second-largest leader of homeless men and women in the nation, 160,000 on a daily basis. Criminalizing homeless people for not having a job, a roof, or a place to sleep, to me doesn't make sense. They say we blame it on the economy. It's not sugar-coated. We're in the depression. A lot of people are hurting, especially me and people in and around the town. So I encourage you to do the right thing here and now, to submit the homeless shelter, decriminalize being homeless for everybody's sake, not only mine, but everybody's. The other thing I wanted to touch on was, to my knowledge, there's only three public bathrooms in the downtown area, the library, City Hall, and the museum. There are no bathrooms for public use. Every day and night, hundreds of people travel in and out of the bus terminal. There's no public bathrooms. Every night, everybody piles out of the bars and restaurants. There's no restaurants. What do they do? They urinate in the public. To my knowledge, urinating in public not only is illegal, but you can be charged as a sex offender for indecent exposure. I encourage you to put in public bathrooms in and around downtown Fullerton. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council. I just wanted to make a brief comment, and I wanted to actually say it at the last meeting when all of you when all of you were making some sort of contribution to this city by cutting back on your salary. And I just thought that was a very noble statement by everybody on City Council. But I just wanted to also throw out there, as far as cutbacks go, I believe we also just got to be careful about that. There's many services that are provided from the city that are doing an incredible job, and I believe they're actually encouraging businesses and new community move, new community members to move in to the city. And they are underneath Don Hoppy's supervision, and one of them is the code enforcement, and the other one is the graffiti removal. And I know that's going to come before you, and I hope that you really look at those and understand the value of what they have done for our community, and all of our communities as far as cleaning the graffiti and actually making it a better place to live. Also, when it comes to the corridors, not just the downtown corridor specific plan, but just in general, if we invest money in these corridors, the city tax revenue into these corridors, I really feel it's going to bring in businesses. And new home buyers, as we've already seen, we've had three major developments with Olson, Brandywine, and Deeser coming into the city. And I believe we still need some improvements in that area to happen on these corridors immediately, to encourage new developments to come in. And if you look at these vacant commercial lots that you have approved for these developments to come in, that's more revenue coming in. So if we think about bringing revenue into the city, not just slashing, but bringing revenue into the city, I think, I think that should be on the forefront of our agenda as well. And just another public service announcement, we've had a lot of volunteers working in West Fullerton. I wanted to invite everybody here, the Chief and Evie Free, and a group of West Fullerton volunteers are going to be removing graffiti on the railroad tracks that commuters see on the railroad tracks between Euclid and actually going all the way down past Harbor, we're going to be removing that graffiti. We're going to be meeting that Euclid and Williamson. So I just want to invite everybody out to that location this Saturday. And Alex is just an amazing person as well. We've been working at the schools, a lot of us, West Fullerton residents, and I want to start, not just me, but hopefully everybody coming together to work on these issues in all areas of the city. Just thank you for your time.
Adam, what time this Saturday?
I can answer. It's going to be at 8:00 AM till about 11:30, and then we will be having pizza at Giovanni's from 11:30 till it ends.
That completes our public comments section. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything in the wrap-up of that?
Yeah, I'll just touch on a couple of these, Mayor. Thank you. There was a signal, a young man had mentioned East Valley View and Harbor. I'll ask Mr. Hoppy to check into that one, if you would. Regarding Measure W and the Coyote Hills Project, Council did certify the election results in, I believe it was December. Since that time, there have been no actions taken by council. There was one initial briefing shortly by the legal counsel. More recently, I have been contacted by legal counsel. They've been contacted by Pacific Coast Homes, and we expect them to provide a briefing to council on an upcoming meeting, most likely on the 21st of this month. The closed session item was for the City Lights, but there was no reporting out on that item. There was a question about that that came from the audience. We'll look into the incident that Maureen had mentioned. We do not enter into homes without probable cause or an emergency situation. I was not aware of that situation, so we'll find out what the details are on that. And I think those were the four items that warranted a response.
You know, Mr. Philz, I would like to address Dave Unzbein's comments about the fact that a hearing that regarding a lawsuit filed by Chevron had been continued now six times, and he seemed to imply that the city or the council was in cahoots with this whole thing. It bears reminding that we are the defendants in that lawsuit. We don't have control over the lawsuit. We must defend against it. So, there are options. The city could go ahead and move for summary judgment, which includes a great expense for legal fees to do that. Continuing a hearing from one day to another costs virtually nothing. So you need to be, to make sure that you know that the city, in my light, to my lights, is behaving appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Councilmember. We are now at the consent calendar, which encompasses items one through seven. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping appointments, right. We do have a scheduled appointment for the Planning Commission. And Madam Clerk, could you inform us on that?
We have one appointment to make. It's an at-large appointment on the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2016. And there should be a list of applicants at the dius there for you. And also earlier, I believe we briefed you on what the top five candidates were off of that list, based on the interview panel.
Excellent. I would bring it back to council at this point. Anyone having comments on this item?
I'd like to just take a moment and acknowledge the candidates that I had the opportunity to sit down and interview, along with the Mayor and the Chairman of the Planning Commission, Chairman Pendergraph. And there were some incredibly talented individuals that I was very fortunate enough to sit across the table from and interview, who I think would all very well serve this city. It's almost unfortunate that we can only choose one, because there were so many great candidates. So with that, I just want to thank everybody that did apply, everybody that did interview, took time out of your busy day to join us, who took time out of our busy day to all get together and find out who the best candidate is. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say as well, I got the opportunity to sit with the Mayor and with Chairman Pendergraph in the morning and interview candidates. And I agree with Councilman Seaborn, there were so many great Fullerton residents who were willing to stand up and say that they would put in, you know, the hard work to be a part of Planning Commission. And it is hard work, it is important work. So I appreciate everyone who applied. I don't know if you're ready to take a motion, but I, I mean, I thought everybody was great, and I would love to move that we appoint May Ann Johnson.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint May Ann Johnson and a second. I would ask if there are any other recommendations? Or any further comment as well, before we move forward?
Is there a briefing on her qualifications, so people know who she is? Do we have anything on that?
We have copies of the applications, the completed applications for all of the candidates.
Yes, I've read that, but is it, the public probably doesn't know?
Sure, and I would just say, you know, just to give you an idea about why I moved that May Ann get this position. May Ann is an active member of the Fullerton community. She has a specific skill set that I think could be real beneficial to Planning Commission. She currently works for SCAG, which is the Southern California Association of Governments, and planning is, planning is what she does. And that expertise on our Planning Commission right now, we have a good diversity on our Planning Commission, I think, of Fullerton business owners, of other commissioners, folks kind of that go all over the spectrum, including, we also have an architect. But we have no one sitting on Planning Commission who has that planning background. So I think she would really bring a great perspective, and I also appreciate her, she's just a vibrant, enthusiastic individual, which I think will also be good for that commission.
Thank you. Along with Councilmember Seaborn and Councilmember Fitzgerald, I interviewed really nearly all the candidates as well. We had, I believe, 17 applicants for the one position. And we did have a wealth of candidates. We limited to a handful of those who we thought were the strongest candidates. Ms. Johnson was one of those. I feel that perhaps, to do justice, it's necessary to put at least one other name out there as well, and so I would move to nominate Don Ortega, who was also one of the handful of candidates who were finalists.
You know, just to add to the diversity, maybe I should nominate someone else? No. Seriously, this is just an incredible decision, because there were so many really great candidates. I'm so impressed at what Fullerton has to offer, you know, the diversity of candidates that were available. I would definitely second Don, very capable individual, and that doesn't diminish for May Ann. I think she would be an awesome Planning Commissioner, and I think we'd be greatly served by either of them.
And likewise, my intent is not to detract from May Ann, because she was one of my top choices as well. But we did have an initial motion and a second on the floor. Are there any further nominations for this position? Seeing none, we'll take them in order. Ms. Johnson, all those in favor of appointing her to the Planning Commission, please?
Mayor, but we do have one person from the public that'd like to speak.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak today. I was one of the candidates there, and Mr. Seaborn and Chairman, Councilmember Seaborn and Chairman Pendergraph interviewed me, but you were not present there. I'd like to ask, was that interview valid then? Because you just mentioned that 17 people you interviewed, and I was the 17th one.
Yes, it's a good question. There are no requirements as to the mechanics of this. I was unfortunately at a board meeting of the Orange County Water District right through the midday section, and so I missed the appointment with you. That's why I didn't recognize you immediately. But no, there are no real requirements. We seek to get as many, you know, people on the council available, and the Chair of our Planning Commission, to interview the majority of candidates. But most of the evaluators don't speak with every candidate. Sure. Thank you for your interest. I do want to also state that everyone who applies and puts the application in place, that that remains for some period of time. And then, of course, the impressions that everyone make in the application, I think, has a bearing on future decisions as well. So I think that it's still time well spent. But I do agree that we do have a wealth of candidates to choose from here. And I didn't want to shut out any public comment. If there is any other public comment on this, we'll make allowance for that right now. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Again, any final comments or questions?
I think I'd like to nominate about five more. But we need to get consensus, and there are 16 choices, and we need to get three people here to agree. So I am supporting May Ann.
Okay, we were going to take them in order anyway, so that original motion was to nominate May Ann. And if there's no further comment, all in favor of, yeah, in fact, a roll call vote probably makes sense here. Could you please?
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Councilmember Florrie.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaborn. Mayor Pro Tem Chapey.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
We'll make it unanimous, aye. Congratulations, Ms. Johnson. I don't know if she's here.
She is, actually.
Excellent. Now, as I said earlier, we're ready for the consent calendar, which encompasses items one through seven. Is there any interest on the council to pulling any of those items?
I'd like to pull Item Two.
And Number Three.
Item Number Two and Three, I would invite a motion to move the balance.
Move the balance.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous. Item Number Two, Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Thanks, I just wanted to pull this item, because I think it's important when people go out of their way to make our community better, that as much as we can, we applaud them publicly. And we have some folks who have made donations to the Police Department, who I just want to call out and thank. Brian's Barbecue donated $1,000 toward the Police Department's Adopt a Family program, which assists Fullerton families in need. The Grand Inn made a $200 donation to the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. And Robert and Linda Cornish donated $100 to the Police Dog Fund, and I just wanted to publicly thank you for that. And with that, I'd move the item.
Great, thank you for those comments.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item Number Three, Councilmember Florrie.
For the same reason that Jennifer mentioned, the donations, I would like to thank the Wilson Phelps Foundation for its donation of $8,800 to be used by the Police Department. The funds will be earmarked for training and supporting 31 Police Department supervisors through the Josephson Institute. For those of you who might not be familiar with the Josephson Institute, that is the man, Michael Josephson, who teaches the character counts in school districts. This particular, these particular funds will be used to train police supervisors in advanced decision-making, police administrators, and leadership strategy. So I'd like to thank the Wilson Phelps Foundation for that donation, and I would move the item.
Thank you. Item has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item Number Eight is a public hearing involving the proposed water rate increase. We have Dave Schickling, Water Systems Manager. I would like to open the public hearing at this stage, or after your presentation. Thank you, go ahead.
Mayor Whitaker, members of the council, Dave Schickling, Water System Manager. I have a real brief presentation, Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
We'll first go over the components of the water rate increase in front of you. First is the water supply cost pass-through increase. Next is the cost for services increase. We're not talking about the infrastructure funding at this point, nor are we talking about the refunding, other two issues that have been talked about on several occasions. And then finally, proposing an appeal process for utility bills will be the final item. Water rate pass-through increase, I think you've all been familiar with this one for many years. It's the external cost we pay for our water supply. Metropolitan Water District, whatever their acre-foot cost every year is, we pass that through. Orange County Water District sets a rate for pumping. Also, the energy costs that are required, we pay to utilities, Anaheim Utility and Southern California Edison, and also our water supply loss factor every year. So those are, those are the factors that go into calculating the pass-through increase. We have, we've done, our last pass-through increase was July 1st, 2010. So part of this increase does take care of the amount that we didn't collect during that from now to then. The second component of it, of this water rate increase, is the cost for services. You guys thoroughly reviewed it on February 19th at your council meeting. We took that formula that was approved at that time, and you see the amount that we came up with that's being implemented as part of the water, proposed water rate increase at this time. What is, how does that affect the water bills? Well, the last time we did a pass-through increase in 2010, July, actually, that should be 2010 right there, the water bill was approximately $47.25. That's for a single-family home using 14,000 gallons and 1-inch meter. The proposed two-part pass-through and cost for services would increase that by 19 cents per month. How do we compare with neighboring cities? As you see, we kind of switched places with Anaheim, but we're right about the same, and that's comparing a 14,000 gallon consumption at a 1-inch meter for a single-family resident. So we're still one of the lowest around. To the Energy Resource Management Committee, and this is the proposed adjustments to appeals on water bills. You all know what they do. They examine natural resources in the city related to energy, and there's an advisory body to you guys. We'd like to add to their responsibilities, the appeals process, and that would include future refunds also. The changes we made to the resolution atta- changes we made to the resolution attached, we changed the quorum, which currently is at four members. We changed, we suggested it be changed to chairperson or vice chair plus two members for if they are going to handle utility appeals, we want to limit the number of cancellations of meetings, so that's why we proposed that. The appeal process currently is a very thorough one. It's just, we wanted to make it a little more formal for those items that come up that are, that tend to get kicked around the city, and it's hard to make a determination, so we suggest formalizing the process. That process would go to, you know, they contact customer service, and at that point, if they didn't like what they heard, they'd write a letter and appeal to me and the water utility service manager. If they didn't like our answer, they would go to the ERMC. And then finally, if they still didn't like that, they would come to you guys. So it'd be thoroughly vetted by the time you received it. An example of it, this would, there's about four to six of these a year. That's all we're talking about. Currently, the city treasurer handles all the financial issues with water utility bills, you know, working out payment schedules and that type of things. We're talking about the actual water usage and disputes with metering and things like that. So what you see in front of you is a graph that depicts a customer that had an onsite leak. And if you see in June, the two colors are the previous year and the current year. June, it's about the same. August, it started to increase, and then October, it really increased a lot. In December, it was still high. We have a two-month billing process, so unfortunately, you don't, sometimes you don't find out, and that's, you know, we'd like to improve that in the future, but that's another issue. So this person would then appeal, and if they didn't like the process, or they didn't like the decision that was made by myself or the city clerk, the city treasurer, it would go to ERMC, and they would hear the result of it. Now, in this case, it was, again, we're calling it onsite leak. So admittedly, after meter checks and everything that we went through there, the water did go through the meter. The city water rate customers did pay for that water, but it ended up on the site of this person. This person felt that, you know, their bill went, as you see, probably ten times to what it usually is. And so at that point, we would present the RMC with all the facts, and their peers would make a recommendation on which way to go with it. So that's what we're talking about here. So that concludes the information I have for you. So the recommendations in the agenda letter, we actually have, we received a hundred and seven letters, because we received a couple, a hundred and eight letters of protest. And as you know, as it's outlined in the agenda, and the notices that we send, a hundred and nine.
You know what's up in select ever shot?
Yeah, and county. So, and the way the law states it, the public hearing, we send out a notice to every customer in the city, which is, you know, over thirty-two thousand notices we sent out, somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-six thousand. And it's outlined in there how you protest. If we receive a majority protest, then the rate increase, pass-through rate increase will not happen. And so at this time, that's what we've held. We have a public hearing, which is up and coming now. And then, they're going to absent a majority protest, pass the resolution attached, and then also the resolution we have, which modifies ERMC's responsibilities. That's what you have, the three items before you. Just quickly, the next steps, because we have a lot of water issues going on after this public hearing and after tonight, we hope to bring back to you on two weeks from tonight, the updated comprehensive water rate study, which outlines that infrastructure funding, which we've all been waiting for. And so that would, you know, that, we'll present that to you guys to look at and ask questions and see what we got from there. And that, at that point, if that's the way, the direction we want to go, we have a public hearing sometime in August, first meeting in August, you see tentative there. And at that point, that would become part of the new rates. So, but that's, that would be two weeks from today. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Schickling. Any questions from council to Mr. Schickling?
Yes, I have a couple.
Mr. Schickling, myself and I gather a couple of the other council members have received letters from members of the Apartment Association of Orange County, and they are objecting to the way in which apartment or multi-residential properties have to pay for their water rates. They also pay under a tiered system that encourages them to conserve water, but I think it's time for the council to be briefed on how multi-residential properties are charged for their water. So this action that the council may or may not take this evening won't affect that, but I think we, the council needs to be briefed in the next month or so about that issue.
And I would just add, not only briefed on how it exists currently, but I'd like to see us actually study our rate structure compared to some other cities who I understand have changed their tiered system in the last few years, like Orange and Westminster, to see if there's an update and possibly fairer way to apply a structure across the board.
Okay.
We could certainly bring that back, and I should note, based on the communications, that we did reach out to the Apartment Owners Association Executive Director and have asked for a meeting with her, and so we'll keep you posted on that as well.
Yes, on the rate structure, I believe Anaheim simply has one rate, and applies the same to everyone, and they have a slightly lower rate than we do, although we're pretty good. I'd like to see what that would look like. And then, when I look at the proposed structure that we have, I see we have tiered the cost of services. That seems to me, the cost of services really is not a conservation item, and the intent was to be fair with that. And so I wonder what it would look like if this were redone, where the cost of service were spread evenly among all the categories. I believe that would have the effect of reducing some of the residential amounts, and probably the bulk rate, water users would see their bill go up slightly. But I'd like to see what that looks like and the different ways of how that might be handled. On the review of utility bills, how many disputes do we have in a given year?
Well, anywhere, during the past years, since I've been here, anywhere from thirty to a hundred. So this is, this is probably the most we've received in the last couple of years, but we're right in the ballpark with what we get.
Yeah, none have ever reached the council, at least not while I've been up here. Does it frequently go up to the council level? Is that kind of rare?
Well, we collect the letters. They're addressed to Mr. Don Hoppy, the Director of Public Works. And from there, then we report back to you, but we are, we are holding them. We have supplied the council with the letters before, when there may be thirty of them, so that you guys can read through. We have them available, and we definitely will supply you with them if you'd like to have them, if that's what you're asking.
Mayor Potem, if I could, or Mayor, if I could, I think you're referring to the protest process being proposed here today. That, there haven't been any recently, but there, I think there's one pending of an appeal. These are, they're occasional, there's four to six a year. We were trying to, or we're recommending that we make this consistent with other appeal processes that go before an advisory body, the city council, much like the street tree. If there's an appeal of a replacement of a street tree, for example, someone can appeal, and it goes to the Parks and Recreation Commission prior to going to the city council. So that's what we're, I think that's what you were referring to, of an appeal of a water bill.
Would the appeals typically be heard at a regular meeting of the Energy and Resource Management Committee? Is that the intent? It's not like you have to always convene a meeting every other day to do this?
Well, we have quarterly meetings scheduled, and if we did receive several protests, we don't want them waiting around too long. So there is occasion where we might have a special meeting to make sure that we keep the process moving.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification regarding the tiered rates and the cost for service, we'll include that in the analysis when we bring back that discussion.
Any further questions? All right, at this point, then, I will open the public hearing and invite the public to speak to this item.
We have seven speaker cards, so whoever gets here first, I think it'll be just fine to jump on the podium.
Again, reporter Reed, I happen to live in a fifty-five-plus condo, very tend to be specific. And the water thing bothers me, not because I pay a water bill, it's part of my association fees. So, and I'm not speaking for my association here. I am just aware that if rates go up with water, and we do have a lot of trees, which I love dearly, my association fees could stand to go up again, and there could be an assessment. Personally, I think that would be really bothersome for me, and probably for a lot of the others who are living early. Thank you for letting me talk about this. I hope, and again, I know you're going to do the right thing. Thank you.
Mayor Whitaker, members of council, my name is Patrick Nellie. I live on the West Side. And I'm chairman of the Energy and Resource Management Committee. I just simply wanted to let you know that I already had an opportunity to be briefed with city staff and the city manager about the issue that's pending before your body tonight regarding whether or not the ERMC would be used as a, sort of as a citizens' review along the way if there were a protest based upon a utility or water users' arguments, as you've already heard. And so, once we get a decision from council, we'll go back to ERMC. I don't think there's going to be any objection. We've already had this item briefed with the idea that it's going to go before your body to have it looked at, to see whether or not we want to actually move forward with this idea, if it's going to, with the idea that there's not that many of these. It was basically agreed that if we did need to meet on an emergency basis to meet with a resident who had a protest, it would give them a peer review opportunity to actually have citizens, fellow citizens, look at this objectively and not necessarily just the city. And many people on the ERMC, like myself, have been in this business for a long time, or in other related business. So that would be my comment about that. We're willing to serve, should that be your, because. I'd also like to say that regarding the water rate issue and the pass-through, it's been three years. And these are costs that have already been borne by the city in, from capital reserves, from the water. So to protest this right now, as far as I'm concerned, and the letter that's been circulated, this is my own personal opinion, is disingenuous. This is a Proposition 218 issue. It's already been vetted through Proposition 218. That's why our residents have been sent letters of notification regarding this. We're talking about an approximate nineteen cents for fourteen thousand gallons of water?
For one thousand.
Or for one, per one thousand? I don't know how many people spend money on bottled water, but I think you spend a little bit more than nineteen cents. So we're already getting a bargain. This is, these pass-throughs are already a part of the process of agreement that this council has made with Orange County Water District and Metropolitan Water District and Southern California Edison for pumping charges. So I don't know what a protest about the water rate pass-through increase is, because the city council is really the one that's made these decisions in the past. Unless you want to rescind some of your already previous decisions regarding how we process these issues with our member water agencies. Go ahead. But those are my views, and again, ERMC is ready to serve if, should that be your case. So thanks again. If you have any other questions, let me know. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Tony Packidge. I live in Fullerton. Good evening, city council, Mayor Whitaker, and city council members. I'll try not to waste your time. One of the things I would, I'd like to comment first is about the wonderful mailing we received on the water rate increase. A little something that would be interesting would be if you put numbers on there, like page one, page two, page three, page four, so we could figure out whether we're reading this way to this way, or this way down here, or that way over there, or this way over here. It'd just be a small, little bookkeeping thing. Number two is, I have no, I agree with the previous speaker that on the cost is increased on the cost of pass-throughs, I mean, that's what we live with, and that's, that's what's going to happen, and we're going to have to live with that, and they're not significant. It has been three years, and I thank you for that. My protest is for, against the, again, the cost of service fee of 5.85, which is actually down from 6.75, so that's an improvement. But still, at the same time, I feel that the city overcharged for over twenty years at the 10% rate, and why not try to make something nice for the public and save the public some money, and eliminate all these, the inclusion of the city property? That's what I, I feel that we should, we should go back, look at that decision. I know it was a three-to-two decision. I know who the three are. I won't vote for you again. So I want you to know that. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker, members of the council. My name is Jack Dean. I'm with the Fullerton Association of Concerned Taxpayers. I don't think, I haven't heard anybody protesting against the pass-through. I think that's something that is a given in, in normal times. Why I'm here this evening, though, is, I've already expressed my opposition to the water rate increase, and I wanted to go on record again tonight at this public hearing. The increase is based on a cost-of-service study that was discredited and disallowed by the previous city council. That council voted to refund three years of overcharges to ratepayers after the discontinuance of a 10% illegal in-lu franchise fee that had been skimmed into the general fund for many years. But this council voted to reverse that action. It's my belief, after talking with many Fullerton residents, that most ratepayers are still not aware that they won't be getting the full three-year refund as originally promised. Plus, they will be having their water rates increased, 5.85%, henceforth, based on that Enron-style study. I suspect they won't be happy when they discover this. A process vote which requires written objections from more than 50% of all ratepayers is pretty much a mission impossible, so I decided not to invest time and effort toward that goal. I believe, however, that when ratepayers learn the whole story, they will factor it into their future votes in city council elections. Thank you.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Nicholas Dunlap. I'm here on behalf of the Apartment Association of Orange County, also here on behalf of Dunlap Property Group, an apartment owner and operator in the city of Fullerton. I wanted to go over a couple of things. First and foremost, it's related to some studies that we have as apartment owners, and the studies show that it takes about eighty-four hundred gallons of water per month to provide for the basic sanitary needs of a household of 3.8 people. So when you look at that number, the eighty-four hundred gallons, and you see that single-family residences are allotted 7,500 gallons of water usage per month at that basic rate, apartments are only allotted 4,000 gallons at that same, at the rate. And that's not per unit, that's per building. So if you look at it, a fourplex, whether it's a, you know, a four-unit building, a 20-unit building, a 100-unit building, they're allotted the same, you know, usage of that base rate. And as a result, the bills are going to skyrocket without, you know, without, with that tiered structure. And so realistically, what we are proposing is for the city to work with the Apartment Association to establish a tiered structure that will be more favorable for multi-unit dwellings. Part of, you know, this cost and what will happen as a result of this increase in cost will be, you know, billbacks or rental increases to residents that will have to help recuperate some of the increase in cost that apartment owners are now having to pass on to their residents. And that's truly unfortunate, especially in a time when there's such a crunch and such a demand for affordable housing. So the Apartment Association is happy to help the city arrive at an equitable solution, you know, both for single-family and for multi- you know, both for single-family and for multifamily dwellings. We've recently worked with the city of Orange, and we've also worked with the city of Westminster to, you know, to arrive at, at strategies that were, that were effective in, in helping both parties. Now, lastly, you know, I did have a question about the, the cost for services, and I, I just wasn't sure because as I understand it, the funds are taken out of the enterprise fund and then put into the general fund, and it was, it was my understanding that when that's done, that that's a tax. I wasn't sure, but, you know, that, that was my understanding, and I wasn't sure if I, I just wasn't clear on something, but just wanted to confirm. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from the public?
I'm Betty Lundgren, mayor, and to all the council members. Uh, I've lived in Florence since nineteen forty-three. My grandma lived here in nineteen eighteen. I've managed rental houses and rental apartments for forty years in the city of Fullerton. And the previous speaker said, "I don't think it's fair that the apartments are taxed as higher rate," I understand, "than the single-family homes. They use a lot of water for their yards and their, their flowers and everything. Apartment owners don't have much yard compared, so all our bill is for our tenants." So, and our tenants, I just find I'm getting young people, the rents are high, but if the water rates go up, then we have to raise the water rates. So, whatever the man from the apartment, I belong to the apartment house association too, but I'll go along with everything he said. I thought I was gonna get a good reward for the money that I was paid over the years. Like, one fourplex is four hundred dollars a bill for four units. That's pretty expensive. So, I hope I get a little bit back, but thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further. Pardon? Sure, go ahead.
Can I just make one comment? Excuse me. Mr. Seaborn, as our representative on the Orange County Sanitation District Board, could you possibly look into what the latest figures are of the per capita flow rates are to the, uh, Orange County Sanitation District from the city of Fullerton or the general average from all residential household bills? The last time I recall when I worked there and we did some studies, the number was approximately eighty-eight gallons a day, or eighty, or ninety gallons to a hundred gallons a day. Either way.
Per household?
Per household. Um, so, let's say thirty days, that would be about three thousand gallons, uh, a, a month per household. So, a four thousand gallon allocation that I heard would not be an, a number that would be out of, out of the range, but maybe you can verify for, for the citizens and for council what the latest numbers are so that we can maybe get a better handle on the, inside the house per capita usage, not necessarily considering landscape.
Mr. McNally, I'm happy to do that.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We're gonna put you to work.
Okay. With that, um, I will close the public hearing portion and bring this back to the council. And any comments by council members regarding?
Uh, I'd like to ask staff, um, on the calculation for apartments, is the allotment per building, or is it per, uh, unit?
It's per unit. So, if you had a ten-unit apartment, it would be ten times the four thousand gallons, so it'd be forty thousand gallons for a month for tier one.
Before it moved to the next tiered level, which would be higher?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, just to confirm with Mr. Seaborn and Mr. McNally, we'll, we'll include the full analysis when we come, which is the typical usage and the, and the flow rates, et cetera, when we, when we come back and talk about the tiered structure.
Okay. Yes, we'll look forward to more details on it. All right, I guess not much. Mr. Seaborn, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say the idea of having the Energy and Resource Management Committee take a look as a, an appeals body, kind of do a peer review on this, I think that's a, a pretty good use of, of the advisory body as well as staff. I think the current policy has been staff tries to look at it and, um, talk to the property owner, the ratepayer, and eventually goes to, I believe, the city manager who currently has a discretion to what to do with that, that disputed charge. And I think this kind of takes it out of staff's hands and allows your peers to look at it and come to some sort of decision. And of course, that's always appealable on up to the council. So, I think that's a, a great idea, and I've had several people contact me about exorbitant charges that they've had on their water bill, and after hearing how much some of these water bills are, I don't blame them for being upset and scared and, and having difficulty trying to figure out how to pay it. So, you know, I, I don't blame them at all. Uh, and I think there needs to be some sort of a, a program or a policy or a procedure in place to allow for people to have those grievances looked at a little closer. Uh, so with that, um, I mean, I would move, uh, number three, to adopt a resolution defining the purpose, role, and responsibilities of the Energy and Resource Management Committee and repealing and superseding Resolution Number nine eight one five and revising Rule Number five and ten of the water rates, rules, and regulations.
Now, are we going to take this in two different resolution steps? Is that what we're looking?
Greg, was your motion for just number three? I'll second that.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, I, I was thinking we were gonna go in order, but yes, if you wanna do that, that's fine. All right, that item has been moved and seconded. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor, designate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Just before you made that motion, Councilman Seaborn, I was just going to recount. I don't know whether any of you have had such an experience as a, as a water user, but a few years ago, two or three years ago, I had one summer month that was about thirty times the normal volume usage of water. And so, it contributed to far and away the largest water bill that I've ever had for the city. So, I called up and asked if, if I could get clarification on where this was coming from. And someone came out, took a look at the meter, and said, "Well, the meter's working fine. It must be correct." Uh, I disputed again the amount of charge, and they said, "Well, there must be leakage somewhere." So, I searched, I did a number of tests, did everything I could to identify whether there's leakage or not. Couldn't locate any, no repairs were done, but the very next month and every month since then, no such problem, no, no recurring issue. Now, I saw something like that itemized in the materials where someone, it was a sample protest, I think, and it seemed to be very similar to my experience. And I'm just wondering how often that happens?
Uh, Mayor Whitaker, that, we're about four to six a year. And the one that we showed you, actually, the, the person resident said I did have a slab leak.
Oh, really?
And, and part of our reorganization you'll see in the budget is we're gonna, we're gonna look at the process, underwater system itself, where we look at the metering and do all that procedure that you just described.
Have you ever seen a leak that fixed itself in such a situation? It'd be a nice trick if we could come up with pipes like that, I guess. All right, well, thanks. Just for the edification of fellow council members here.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, um, I see our representative from the Metropolitan Water District in the audience, and I don't mean to put you on the hot seat, but can I put you on the hot seat and ask you some questions about the, I mean, what we are talking about as you come up, I'll, I'll kind of give my thoughts on it, and that is that there's, uh, MWD has raised their rates to the city of Fullerton, and the city of Fullerton is really passing along the fee hike to the ratepayers is really what's before us. And I realize you're fairly new, and I, I understand it. I don't think you were part of the board of directors at the time that had raised the rates to the current level.
Yes, I do.
But I would like to get your background on that.
Uh, basically, Metropolitan, like the city has done in the past, did a two-year budget for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Prior to that, there had been years when there was no increase or the increase was absorbed by Met, uh, just due to the financial conditions of the cities and Met and all entities, at which time our reserves were pulled down considerably. Uh, our PEGO, which is our fund to pay as we go on repairs and maintenance and things that we have to do, that fund was severely depleted because we were not having funds coming in to, to keep that going. Uh, so what took place is when they did that two-year budget, they set a five percent increase for two thousand thirteen, five percent increase for two thousand fourteen. Now, pardon me, they did, uh, with our most recent review of finances, there is a fifty million dollar surplus that has come because Metropolitan has sold more water and actually had lower power costs. Lower power costs are based upon the restrictions that were placed upon our use of water from the delta. Less water you pump, obviously, the lower cost your electricity is. Now, there's all kinds of discussions going on relative to that fifty million dollars now that we have restored our reserves. Uh, what's going to take place with that fifty million dollars? There's been discussions relative to some cities would like to have this five percent increase mitigated or completely eliminated. Metropolitan would like to put that money into their, as I said, their PEGO account, and they have some employee benefits issues like most entities have where they're underfunded. So, they're looking at, at many different things. Uh, I've talked with Mr. Fells about a letter from the city. If, if it's the city's decision to try and mitigate that five percent, a letter should be sent, uh, to our Finance and Insurance Committee Chairman. Uh, the, one of the things they've told me is if they put this fifty million dollars into their PEGO fund, uh, essentially, it's like that fifty, fifty million dollars becomes a hundred million because we don't have the debt service on projects that are upcoming that need to be paid for. So, uh, there's many considerations based upon that. If that answers your question, if not, I'll be happy to answer any other.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, in the same vein, put our Orange County Water District representative on the hot seat, since that would be you, just get your, um, background as far as what's going on at OCWD and what those rate increases are from them to the city.
Yeah, I've been aboard the Orange County Water District Board for about seven months now, I believe. And so, I'm, went through the first cycle, which, one of the most important duties of the board is to assign a pumping percentage for all water producers to allow a certain percentage to be pumped from, from all of your wells. We were able this year to increase that pumping percentage, which should allow for more supply, groundwater supply, saving the cost of buying more imported water. Since it's a disastrously low rainfall year, one of our other concerns is to allow overdraft of the aquifers, so we're working to recharge as rapidly as possible those aquifers. And one, one of the tools that we have now is the groundwater replenishment system, which basically treats sewage from your sanitation district and pumps it up to the north part of the county here to be put in percolation basins, which allow that water to be naturally filtered back into our aquifers. So, provided that we're able to maintain the levels in the aquifers in this very low local rainfall year, uh, we have established a higher pumping percentage. So, even though the, the cost per acre foot to be able to utilize from groundwater went up very slightly, the net effect this year was a, a reduction in cost. Because of the higher pumping percentage, it more than offsets the increased amount if you compare the alternative to the imported water supply. I can't speak with such detail to the prior couple of years leading up to this, but I know that, that remains the goal of the Orange County Water District Board, is to achieve higher and higher levels of pumping percentage, which provides relief to all the producers that we serve.
So, in essence, by doing that, eventually, the district might hope to wean us from some of our needs to import water? Is that kind of the long-range goal?
Yeah, a very long-range goal is for most producers to become more and more self-sufficient. Uh, we don't know whether we can ever be completely self-sufficient. With growth and higher demands in water, we tax every aspect of, of what we're doing. But, uh, new efficiencies are being reached, and, yes, I, I sense that no one's gonna be satisfied until we're able to supply what we need locally. Now, the other side of that is conservation, which has cut both ways the last few years in terms of making revenues less available for the capital needs of all the producers and, and the transporters of water. So, it's, it's a very delicate balancing act all the way around. But certainly, I've been pleased that we've had some considerable rainfall the last couple of days here locally. It'll take a lot more in May to make up for, for our shortfall this year, but every bit helps. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead. Uh, it seems like we've done the easy thing, and now it's time to talk about the hard things. Uh, and, you know, we, there's so much to be said, there's so much that could be said on this issue, um, but I'm gonna be as succinct as I can. Uh, this is a complicated issue as well, but I wanna be clear about what this council has done. Uh, we established how much it costs each year to run a water agency for our ratepayers. And, uh, we had to prop 218 notice it because it is an increase from what we were being charged because the city council over the summer had stopped charging anything. So, of course, any cost of service is going to be more than nothing, but this cost of service is much less than the franchise fee that we paid for before. Uh, I can't get around the fact that there is a cost to running a water agency, whether the enterprise fund runs it or Golden State Water, uh, there's a cost, and, and we all have to pay that cost. Um, we, I also want to be clear that we voted to refund three point three million dollars to the ratepayers. Um, I've consistently said and still believe that what was overcharged to the ratepayers of Fullerton needs to be refunded, and I believe that overcharge to be three point three million dollars. And you will see a one-time, uh, credit on your bills mid-June that has that refund on it. Um, and then the last thing that we had to do was approve these pass-through increases that come from Met and Orange County Water District. Uh, for the past, uh, since two thousand ten, uh, the city has been subsidizing that cost for ratepayers, and we can't do that. We all have to pay what it costs us for that commodity. And I would just ask you to not forget that we too have to pay these water bills, so none of us, uh, come to this lightly. But the fact remains that there is a cost to running the water agency. We are refunding the overcharges, uh, and we are, um, having to pass through these costs. So, with that, I would move to adopt resolution, uh, the resolution, as you will number it, I'm sure you listened to, revising water rates to be charged to the users of the Fullerton Water System based on cost for services provided by the city to the water utility, and that we would increase the commodity charge on all rate schedules by seventeen cents per one thousand gallons to reflect increased water supply costs passed through.
Moved by Councilmember Fitzgerald and seconded by Councilmember Florrie. Are there any comments by council?
Uh, just one comment. I would like to thank our Water Rate Study Committee for working so hard and so diligently. It was a fourteen-member committee that met for over a year and a half to study, um, the cost of bringing water into this city. Mr. Dean has characterized that as an Enron-style study because he disagrees with the results of that. And there are plenty of areas in which we can disagree. However, I do not believe that we can disagree on the methodology of the Water Rate Study Committee and the, and the people who served on that. In fact, you did as well, Mr. Seaborn, did you not?
Yes, I did.
You, you were a member on that. Anyway, um, the Water Rate Study Committee's work was not taken lightly. They spent a year and a half on it. There was an independent financial couns, consultant municipal financial services group that prepared the study, which was to determine the actual cost. prepared the study, which was to determine the actual cost. We had legal counsel that was retained by the city to identify whether or not the methodology was acceptable from a legal point of view. BBK, which was the name of the, Best, Bestin, Krieger was the name of the law firm that blessed the work of the municipal financial study group. And this whole thing was even passed by the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, which concurred with the methodology used in the study. So to discount this study as an Enron-style study is, I don't think is appropriate. Anyway, I do support this. Ratepayers have been given the benefit of no-cost pass-throughs for the past three years. In addition, since January the 1st, even the 10% in lieu fee was not charged. In fact, that was before, it's been almost a year that the ratepayers have not had to pay any cost of service. So I do support the resolution for those reasons.
I support the resolution, but I am a little concerned about how the costs are being spread. When we look at the pass-through, that is flat rated at 17 cents on this chart for all categories. But when we come for cost of service, it is spread apparently based on a projection of the base rate, which has been tiered for conservation purposes, except not in the case of the bulk water users. So I would like to see what it would look like if the cost for services were similarly spread as they are in the pass-through. It seems to me that might be a more fair way of accounting for that. And would, I think the conservation element was not in trying to come to a fair resolution with the actual cost was. And so I'd like to see the actual cost spread equally among all of the users. To me, that would be a fair way. But I do support the resolution. We do need to get on to this, and I think if we can study the whole rate thing, we may come up with something different than this, but this needs to be done tonight.
You know, what I disagree with most is that this is a cost of service, or that all of the elements identified are actually costs of service. I think what we have identified and what staff did a great job at with the Water Rate Study Committee, the consultants all did a great job at, is identifying what the value was of the water that we consume. But I think we fell flat identifying what the cost is on it. Actually, I shouldn't say that. We didn't fall flat. We've always known what the cost is. It was just a matter of, is it, do we pay what the value is really worth, or do we pay what the cost truly is? And I think we've jumbled the terms enough that we just call it a cost of service, like paying rent for city-owned offices, that the ratepayers and the taxpayers, who are largely one and the same in the city of Fullerton, as I understand it, there's only a couple of, or a handful of residents or businesses that don't pay, that aren't also taxpayers and ratepayers in the city of Fullerton. And so you have such a broad overlap that they're one and the same, and to say that one group needs to automatically pay for something that was already paid for by that same group, you know, it just seems disingenuous. But again, I think it's a discrepancy in whether it's the value we're trying to understand or whether it's the actual cost. And I think we've tried to assess a fee or a tax to the value and not the actual cost.
Thank you, Councilman Seaborn. I too have difficulties with this because this assumed cost of service is precisely the type of calculation that Proposition 218 was designed to prevent, which would be just an optional adoption of theoretical, not actual, incurred costs. And I appreciate that the percentages come down somewhat slightly. But my view is that the ratepayers were paying the actual cost of production and delivery all those years without that in lieu franchise fee. I disagree with the notion that Howard Jarvis blessed this, that the Howard Jarvis Association blessed this approach. Early in their discussions, they merely were talking about methodology, and they told the city they had no great objections. But really, the objection I have, it comes down to policymakers. And in this case, it's our call with which to recognize and adopt these somewhat theoretical costs, or give the ratepayers a break by reverting to what has been the traditional practice of actual incurred cost. As Prop 218, which was adopted by voters in this state, was intended to prevent this type of a calculation, as I said earlier. So I wish that this were more in the range where I could join in and support, but I will be voting against this. So at this point, I would entertain, unless there's further comment? Yes, Mr. Seaborn?
Mr. Mayor, remember the council, we have two motions and two seconds on two different resolutions.
We passed the earlier one. We actually voted in.
Did we pass number?
Unanimous, yes.
Number three.
We cleared the decks of number three. We took them out of order.
I must have taken a break. Sorry.
Thank you, though. That's a...
And then we're just on to the...
We're strictly talking about number one.
Correct. I apologize.
Yeah, one and two, sir. So any further comment, or I would entertain a motion on this item?
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, all right. Sorry. I guess I'm joining in here now.
Number two was not part of the motion for number one, was it?
Yes, it was.
That's two wrongs in one night.
Okay, this item has been moved and seconded. All in favor, designate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No. Passes three to two.
Mayor, could I ask that we take up number 10 first? I think we've tortured our audience long enough with some of these issues.
Oh, I was hoping you were asking for a five-minute break.
I can do that.
Perhaps we could say yes to both of those.
All right.
Possibility. Okay. When we return, we will take up item number 10, out of order, and proceed with the agenda.
Members, oh, I'm turned off there. All right, we'll resume the city council meeting. Council members, please return to the dais. And we're going to be dealing with item number 10, which is an appeal of the planning commission approval of the applicant Victory Outreach. And we have Joan Wolf, who will lead the discussion on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Sorry, I've been working up until now, 13 hours now.
And you're still working.
So if I'm a little off, you know, just tell me to slow down. This is an appeal of a planning commission approval of a project at 824 East Commonwealth Avenue. It is a project that requested approval of a conditional use permit to allow a conversion of an existing commercial building in the C1 zone to a church use. And that is according to chapter 15.55 of the municipal code. Here's an aerial showing the project vicinity. The project itself, project site itself is outlined in yellow. The surrounding area is a mixture of uses. Immediately adjacent properties include a commercial building to the east, apartments to the west and to the south. There's a market to the north across the street. And there's single-family residential uses to the north in a preservation zone and other multifamily residential uses in the area, primarily to the south. The project, as I said, is a conditional use permit for a church in a commercial zone. Approximately 33,000 square foot building, about 1,200 square feet of sanctuary area, about 50 seats in the sanctuary. And although 17 parking spaces are required for a church, and it is based on the number of seats, one parking space per three seats, they are providing about twice that much, 33 parking spaces. The planning commission discussed this item at their February 27 meeting and approved the conditional use permit. There was not a lot of public input at that hearing. And the planning commission discussion, I'll just summarize briefly as follows. They felt that approval was warranted because the project maintains the site plan pretty much as is. The parking capacity is adequate for a church use. There are existing walls along the property line to separate this property from others. They noted that Commonwealth is a transitioning area. As I said, mixed land uses are in the area. And it is also within the downtown core and corridor specific plan area, so there will be further study and evaluation and recommendations for zoning and design standards in that area within the next year, year and a half. They also noted that the church use could be more compatible with the neighborhood than with the prior commercial use, which was an auto rental agency. Because that rental agency used the parking lot to display their cars, there was no parking or very limited parking onsite. And so there was quite a bit of parking overflow. They also approved a resolution that would condition the project so as to not be detrimental to the nearby properties. Some of the conditions of approvals were that there would be no nighttime activity on the site, that all activities would take place indoors, and that the gate to the parking lot would be open when there are activities onsite. So by confining all the activities to inside, then there would be parking maintained in the parking lot. There was an appeal filed. It was filed by two individuals. The concerns that they raised had to do with land use considerations and also with other issues. There was some concern about the parking overflow. There was also concern about nighttime activities and other potential nuisance factors. Steph feels that there are adequate conditions to deal with these three issues. There were some other issues that they raised having to do with the church mission, as stated, and the membership, and the fact that the church was relocating from La Habra to Fullerton. Typically, a conditional use permit is limited to land use considerations. And you really don't have the ability to look further than that. A religious institution is guaranteed certain liberties in terms of land use. And I think those other issues kind of get into that gray area that really are difficult for a city to deal with. So as I said earlier, land use criteria that we can look at, the fact that there are property line walls that separate the property from adjacent properties. There's lighting onsite to maintain security. There's adequate parking. And the property conforms to all the zoning standards for church use in the commercial zone. Here's just some photos. Here's a small aerial. The project site is highlighted in yellow. And to the east is photos of commercial building. To the west is the photo of the apartment complex that's next door. To the north, we have the market and also a couple of single-family residential homes across the street, across Commonwealth. Site plan shows that the building is at the northwest corner of the site. The remainder of the site is open for parking. Floor plan indicates the sanctuary area, which is the area that is parked. And then there's some office uses, restrooms, a little nursery area to be used while services are in session, not for childcare use otherwise. And the action that we are recommending is to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA. Make findings as recommended by the planning commission or as otherwise deemed appropriate, and adopt resolution number upholding the planning commission's approval and denying the appeal. If there are any questions, I am happy to respond.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Seaborne?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One, could you go back to the slide that showed the site plan? I think it was the first one that showed that one. Now, from what I can see of this, a little hard to see, but I don't see the gate. There is a physical gate on the east side, down probably about two-thirds of the way south on the east side, right about where the text is. This is adjacent building, two-story commercial. And I'm wondering, it looks like the gate could be opened from either side if you had a key. Seems a rather odd place to have a gate. And it's not showing up on here, which really causes me some concern, that maybe the site plan is somewhat deficient. And that is kind of a critical thing. Why would one property have access to the east like that for potentially ingress and egress? And so I'd want to see that gate permanently sealed off and removed. Also, you brought up that there's an onsite nursery during services. And I'm not sure if this falls into the same category, so I'd like some clarification. Does a nursery at any point become a school?
In this case, it's a very small area.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. I meant in the context of our municipal code and our building code and how we interpret what is a nursery and what have you. Is it a school?
There's a separate definition for a nursery. So it is not the same as a school.
Any other comments or questions by members of council? Seeing none, Ms. Wolf, thank you. I will invite members of the public to speak to this item.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Jo, hello, my name is Susie Hernandez. I reside at 425 East Valencia Drive. I am a forever resident of Fullerton. I am here to support the approval for Victory Outreach, North Orange County. I remember them when I was a teenager and all that they did for our community back then. I have been involved in a few committees, like the trust loan and park renovations, gang injunction committee, and on-school volunteerism. I am a proponent for Victory Outreach, North Orange County, because I know their passion. I personally know many people whose lives have been touched. Some have become well-known pastors from our community as a direct result of Victory Outreach and their organization. So please continue to help us make a difference, a positive difference.
Good evening. I'm sure we all want to get home and get some food. And I'd like to say thank you very much for listening to me. My name is Jack DalaCorte. I've been a member of Fullerton community for 40 of my 47 years. And I'm here tonight because I adamantly really feel that this is not a good decision. I live west in the apartments next to this facility. I don't think that we want to have the... I guess the terminology is the best term. People that have made bad decisions in their lives, I understand that we all make bad decisions, but these people have been on the other side of the law. And that highly concerns me, seeing that I have my family right next door. It greatly worries me. My family has businesses on downtown harbor. We're pretty prominent here. My mom's... We've been here forever. So that property also has toxic waste on it. I actually was thinking about making it a parking lot for RVs and boat storage. But the original property owner won't clean that up. So it's going to be a very difficult sale. Yes, it is ugly, and it's an eyesore. And I would love to see something move in there. But I adamantly feel that this is a bad move. So if we could not do that some way, I think that would be in the best interest of Fullerton. I think that those kind of people, not being mean to them, it's just it's going to create problems for our own police department, and they have enough to worry about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Robert Hall. I live right across the street from the facility that the church they want to put in. I really opposed to them moving in a church. That location, it is a commercial piece of property, but it's unique because it's surrounded by residential. So saying that they're going to put a church there, there's residential behind it, around it, across the street from it. And there's children that walk around going to and from school. I went out and began talking to the neighbors. And I actually had a petition, because I know a lot of people don't come to city council meetings. This is the first one I've ever been to. And I have 41 signatures from people that live directly around the property. They're landowners or business owners. And they absolutely say, no way they want Victory Outreach there. So I don't know if you'd like to look at this, or do I give this to somebody? Yeah, okay. I was very concerned because of the planning commission. I don't know if you guys reviewed the planning commission tape, but there were a lot of things brought up that the pastor said. They wanted to move from La Habra to Fullerton because they didn't get along with the police department. And that's something that he stated. I was concerned about that. They're coming to Fullerton, a group from outside. Why are we considering moving here? Basically, what they do is they open a church, and then they get group homes in the area, and then they get rehab homes, houses. And then pretty soon, they overrun your neighborhood. And I know that the intent is to open a church, but they're going to have to get group homes, and that's going to be in our neighborhood. And people didn't get a notice about the planning commission hearings. So are they going to be notified when the issue of a group home comes up? You know, I don't know. It's kind of... We feel like we, the residents that live in that area, we don't want them there. And if they're not even from Fullerton, why are we even considering it? It's something that we ought to like. We don't want them there. It's because of what they do. They go out and recruit their members from right off the streets, right out of the jails, and they bring them back to their group. And this is... Am I over my time? I'm sorry, it'll go off, okay? I just don't understand why we're willing to risk the residents, the safety of their children, allowing a group to bring convicted criminals and gang members and stuff, and homeless people and schizophrenics into our neighborhood so they can have a church. Let them stay where they are. If they're fine in La Habra, let them stay there. They will have to open group homes and rehab houses. There's no question, that's how they operate. Where they get their members, that's what they clearly state. That's their policy, this is what they do. It's not a good fit. We don't want them in the neighborhood. And I and the people there are strongly opposed to it. So hopefully, you'll overturn the decision. Thank you.
Lucinda, could you send a copy of that petition by? I just want to see what the petition actually says.
And I just have a question for someone, maybe Joan. This CUP, was it a noticeable item for the surrounding neighbors? That's my question. Takes me a while to get those out sometimes, but that's it.
Yes, it was noticed. It was noticed for 300-foot radius, all property owners, which is the standard noticing procedure that we do for all applications.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to listen to my appeal. Since the other person mentioned some of the issues, I'm not going to repeat those. I'm trying to really make it very short. First of all, I'm the next commercial property and mixed zone, because I used to live there and I may go back to there. I'm not sure in time. And some of you, thank you very much for coming and visiting the location. And the next door, and first, I was concerned about the parking. That's what I came to the first hearing. But my... I hope that this time I would not have the problem of the parking. But my main concern is the safety and security of myself, my family, my business, and my neighborhood. Victory Outreach is a church-oriented, and I appreciate what they do. They try to help addicted alcoholics and gang members. That is very good. And I'm not here to blame anybody or claim that these members have done anything wrong. I hope they find their way. But bringing high-risk people to a mainly residential area, that is not safe for the residential people, for the families, and for the children. I was here for the hearing, and I brought this up, but I did not really emphasize it very much because at that point, I did not know very well Victory Outreach. From what I have heard, what I have searched, I have come to the conclusion that they do some things very nice, but they have some problems. I do not know why the city commission at that night did not ask Victory Outreach why they are moving from La Habra to Fullerton, why they have problems with the city police over there, and they do not have a smooth relationship, why they want to bring their members to our community. I have provided a list of 10 or 11 questions that I have submitted to you. In order to save time, I'm not going to go through those questions. I hope when Victory Outreach's speaker comes here, you run through those questions and ask them for me, please. At the end, if... I hope not. But if you decide to approve this CUP, there are three things that we need to add. First of all, one point is missing from this resolution that in the first hearing, the applicant said that there is no daycare, no counseling services, no other type of services beside the evangelism. And I did not see that point mentioned in the resolution. So we need to add that one to it. Secondly, at the hearing, the hours was proposed to be as it is on the proposal, which means Monday is closed. The rest of the week would be 8 to 5, except the Wednesday and Friday night for the meetings, and Sundays for two meetings. In the resolution, the hours has been changed to be from 8 to 10 p.m. every day. This needs to be changed to what was originally proposed. Because Victory Outreach, they go out at night to recruit their members. And the sooner that they close, this place really will be safer for the community. And my last question is that when the speaker of the church is here, I would like you to emphasize two, two questions. One is that, do they really help their members to move this area? Do they help them to get rental houses in this area? Does it mean that in future, we will have high-risk individuals concentrated in this area? And secondly, do they do anything else besides... And secondly, do they do anything else besides evangelism services? Thank you very much.
Mr. Motamatic, what is your objection to their performing, having daycare services there? Why would you object to that?
What type of daycare services is that first?
Well, daycare means taking care of usually preschool children.
No, that's... I don't have any problem with the preschool children. My understanding was that they bring some of their members in the building and try to feed them or take care of them. With the children, I do not have any...
Okay, so you're not concerned about them having children there, per se?
The adult for taking care of the problems or giving them food or those.
What would your objection to have counseling services there?
I think counseling would... Any activity that brings these people to the community, I have objections.
Well, church services would certainly bring people to the church. Just having a church service would, would it not?
Yes, but the definition, normally our understanding for a church is people who are not at high risk. We are talking a church which has, may have fifteen members of high risk coming into the area. Did I explain it well? I don't know.
Well, you've already indicated that your concern is that the church is for high-risk individuals. So what's the difference if they're going there for a church service or going there for counseling?
Not much here.
Okay.
Oh, sir, I have one question before you leave. In the conditional use permit which was approved by the planning commission, item number seven says if the use sustains three or more verified complaints received by the Fullerton code enforcement officer or the police department within a twelve-month period regarding violations to the zoning ordinance or disturbances which have been caused by residents, staff, or business conducted at the site, it shall be grounds for revocation proceeding. That's a pretty stiff requirement, actually, for a twelve-month period. Do you feel any better about your ability to deal with problems as they arise because of that requirement?
Well, I agree. That's a really good terms to be there. But my concern is that, you see, we are talking about safety and security. Something happens to this community, it might be too late to go to the security, to the council and tell them they have violated their this right or that right. See, these are high people, high-risk individuals. If you have listened to the hearing, one of the members came here and told us that he had some problems. He went to the court, and judge offered him two options. Either go to the jail or go to Victory Outreach. And he selected to go to Victory Outreach. We don't want that type of people that are supposed to go to jail come to our community.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I want to talk about the topic that was just said, the safety of the community or the surrounding neighborhood. I don't see a difference in, you know, it being a safety issue, because I do understand that there was a liquor store there before. My opinion, you know, a church is there to help people. And it's not... It's not members, and it's not drug offenders. It's not, you know, it's different kinds of people. Not all people who come to our church are like that. They're different people. They're different races. They're different, you know, we are all different. And the people that come to our church, yeah, a lot of them, you know, struggle in life, but that's what life is. Life is a struggle, and if we're there to help them in their need, why wouldn't we? We're a church. You know, we're about God. We're about helping the community. We're about, you know, giving them the tools that they need to succeed in life and to go forward, you know, and understand that, you know, it's not over. It's not over for them, and giving them the self-esteem that they need to, you know, move on and deal with their families, deal with their children. Some women that I've met and that I've helped, you know, have come to me, and I was able to, you know, help them, and single mothers, you know, help them know that it's not over. And that's what our church does. Our church, that's all we want, you know? And the reason why we didn't stay in Fullerton wasn't because we have problems with the police or anything over there. We just didn't find a capable, a building capable or compatible with what we wanted to do. And, you know, we thank God every day that we found one in Fullerton, which is a city in need. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I wasn't planning on speaking on this issue. I wasn't asked by Victory Outreach or anybody else to come and speak on this issue. But I had to be honest with myself and just speak on some of the things that I know about Victory Outreach. Number one, to me, there seems to be a fundamental difference. I appreciate the homeowners and what they were speaking about, and the people that reside in that community, and their opinion needs to be heard, because they're the ones that's going to be living next to this church. But there seems to be a fundamental difference between a church and a group home. And I'm just as interested as the homeowner as far as when the group homes do come in, how are the homeowners notified? Because I'm a huge advocate for homeowners and property owners' rights. But there seems to be a major difference between a church and a group home, which is what this seems to be. Going beyond that, I've had several interactions with Victory Outreach as far as from a volunteer standpoint, a lot of them being right here in Fullerton, working with Alex from Habitat for Humanity, and a few other different things that we've done in this community, where we've had Victory Outreach come out to our more challenging neighborhoods in Fullerton. They come strong. They come fifty to a hundred deep. One of the last ones we did was at the Woodcrest Community. We did a cleanup there. We spread out wood chips throughout the entire community. It took us the entire day. They set up a DJ booth. They had face painting for the children. And they reached out to the gang members and the homeless people that were on-site. And they gave them services. They gave them resources. They gave them a choice about a place to live, a live-in facility that would take them in for an entire year free of charge to get them off the street. As you all know, we have a huge problem at the Hunt Branch Library with the homeless people there. On several occasions, they've gone out there, they've reached out to the homeless there. And this is to bring them to a facility, not to their church, but to a live-in facility. They have several of them throughout Orange County. None of them are here in Fullerton, to give them a place to reside. So if this church came in, I have concerns just like everybody else, because I live here. But I see it as possibly being an establishment that could take our homeless here and give them another option as far as a place to live, a place to get them off our streets, to make our city a more hospitable place. To that ends, you know, that's been my, you know, my interaction with Victory Outreach. It's been nothing but positive. And I just wanted to say the little bit that I know about Victory Outreach. And again, it seems to be an issue of a church, not a group home. But at the same time, I do value the opinions of the homeowners. Thank you.
Good evening. Pam Keller, Fullerton resident. I was actually at home. I was here earlier, and I was home, and I wasn't going to speak on this. And I was watching, and I couldn't stand it. I had to come down here, so thank you for indulging me. I want you to know that as part of the Fullerton Collaborative, that you know what my job is, most of you. And we have a partnership with lots of, a variety of agencies, and Victory Outreach is one of those agencies that we have worked with on and off over many, many years. And they've always come through, and we've asked them. Just two weeks ago, at Faces of Fullerton, a group actually spent the night in the plaza all night to keep an eye on our things, to make sure that when the bars closed at two o'clock in the morning, that some of the more rowdy people didn't destroy what we had set up all night. And they did a beautiful job. And then they worked all day long. They helped pick things up and delivered barbecues to schools, and just really did a really good job. And I spoke with some of the gentlemen. We were there at eleven o'clock on Friday night before the event. My husband and I stopped by to check on things, and such respectful gentlemen, and told us their stories, that they did have a hard life before, and they made bad decisions, and Victory Outreach was helping them to make good decisions for themselves and their families. And it was wonderful to meet more of the people involved. I really... We're looking at a church here. Yes, group homes, all of those things, that's something, if that's something that wants to come in, that's something that has to go through a different process. So we're not looking at that right now. We're looking at a church. I also, my husband and I own property right across the street, so just to disclose that, we have rental property. A beautiful young family lives there. I'm not worried for the beautiful young family. I think this is a nice church facility. You know, some of the people there might have tattoos and look a little hardened, but sit down and share a meal and talk to the people that belong to this church, which I have spoken to them. Very wonderful people with big hearts that really want to make a difference in the world and change the way that perhaps they've chosen to live. So I'd like to support this this evening, and I just wanted to come down and let you know. I also spoke to Rosie Espinoza, who is the mayor of La Habra today. And I called her, and I wanted to know, you know, was there a problem in La Habra? So she called her police chief and spoke to him before she returned my phone call, and said that the police chief had no known incidents with Victory Outreach, that there weren't any issues that they were worried about. She spoke to the Boys and Girls Club, which is also where part of their church was. The Boys and Girls Club said they were a good partner, that they had no problems with Victory Outreach. So I don't know where all of the part about La Habra has come in, but the officials in La Habra that I spoke to personally today assured me that there weren't any problems. So I wanted to pass that information on to you that I got. And I thank you for listening to me.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm Jimmy Ibarra, the applicant from Victory Outreach, North Orange County. And I just like to thank you guys for your time in this matter.
All right. Seeing no further speakers, I'll bring the item back to council. Discussion by council?
I just have a question for Joan, if I could. A comment was made about the hours, about the... And I think you said there wouldn't be any nighttime activity there, but could you just go over the hours of operation again for me, please?
On behalf of condition of approval that requires that they operate in accordance with their application. And they did have limited hours that they proposed to be open. What I intended to do was give a little bit of flexibility in the hours, because a church may come in and say, we're never going to be open on Monday. But then they end up saying, well, we're going to be open on Monday, but not on Friday. And so I just tried to give the flexibility for, you know, every day of the week, even though they said they wouldn't be there Monday. Also, if they would change services from Wednesday to another night, or from Friday to another night. That was the intent of broadening those conditions.
So it's eight a.m. to 10 p.m.?
Right. And it would be indoor activities on here? Did I answer your question?
Mm-hmm. And what's the capacity?
Capacity is fifty.
Okay, thanks.
Chief Hughes, I had heard in the last couple of days that because of the concerns expressed by the neighborhood that you had called the police chief in the city of La Habra, did you have a conversation with the police chief?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
And can you relate to us what the police chief said?
I spoke to Chief Jerry Price of the La Habra Police Department to indicate, to see if there's been any increase of crime since Victory Outreach had been in their facility. And he told me that there was not any increase in crime, and that he was unaware of any issues at all that has been associated with this church.
Did he indicate how long Victory Outreach had been in La Habra?
I don't believe I asked him.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ibarra, could I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Last night, I watched the video of the February twenty-seventh Planning Commission, and your pastor got up and explained a little bit about how the church had started. And he did make a statement. He made a reference that he had tried to buy five, tried to locate the church in five locations in La Habra, but they didn't want them. Can you explain what that was about?
They were having problems with some of the residents passing. Some of the parking issues had come up on a couple of the incidents, on a couple of the applicant requests on some of the properties that we had tried to proceed in getting. So that was the only reason why they just didn't, they weren't a perfect fit for our capacity and what we were trying to do.
So you're just talking about trying to find a building to lease that didn't pan out?
Correct.
Were you trying to purchase property?
No, that's, we're hoping for that in the future here.
Are you leasing this site?
This will be a five-year lease, yes.
How long have you been in La Habra?
We were there for six years, and we're now in Fullerton now at the Women's League. We're running out of the Women's League facility here.
What kind of activities do you conduct in La Habra?
Just community activities.
Is it a church in La Habra?
It's actually, we do some evangelizing there. We do some evangelizing all over the North Orange County area, so it's not just particularly in La Habra. We just happened to be based there for the first six years.
And what other activities besides your evangelion?
Just church services, basically, our church services. And we don't have our men's home there anymore. It's offsite. Actually, it's in the Alleah County.
So you do have a men's home?
We do.
All right. In the other locations that you have in Orange County, do you have group homes around those churches?
There are, there are, but those are separate entities of Victory Outreach, so...
What cities are they in?
City of Anaheim, Santa Ana, Garden Grove, some of those other cities.
When you establish a group home, do you have to go through some sort of approval process in the various cities?
We go through statewide approval process as well, and comply with any rules that the state and even the surrounding cities may have.
Are you aware of any incidents of criminal activity or disruption in the La Habra community since you've been there?
No, nothing that I can tell you of.
So you don't know of any church members who might have been incarcerated or arrested for...
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, I mean, a number of individuals that have had criminal records, and they have changed their lives. I happen to sit here in front of you to be one of them.
But I'm talking about criminal activity associated with the church activities?
No, that's a painted picture from way, way back. And it was still, like I said, it was a painted picture.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question for you while you're up there. Could you just summarize your mission as a church in Fullerton?
Our mission is to go out into the areas where nobody else wants to go, into the community where you might have a family that has maybe a son or daughter that's having trouble with maybe drugs or alcohol. And are we able to relate to them and talk to them and give them, you know, some guidance as far as our organization is concerned?
I have a question involving, and it came up, I guess, in the planning commission as well. There's a requirement that security be provided. What would be the nature of the security for the site?
Security is a walk-on security throughout the services and throughout, anytime anything is going on during church time or during the times of activities.
And that's provided by your members, or you contract for outside?
By our members, yes.
Okay. And they're unarmed and uncertified, basically?
They're unarmed, and they all have the capability of calling law enforcement if needed.
And I'll just mention, any good church has security.
I had a couple of questions, I'm sorry, for Ms. Wolf, if you could. Things that came up, and I just wanted to talk to you about them. You know, a lot of churches do have activities that are overnight, and I'm thinking to some of the churches that cater to the young families, and oftentimes, they'll have, you know, kids spend the night for...
young families, and oftentimes they'll have, you know, kids spend the night for some sort of retreat activity, that sort of thing. Is there any anticipation that any activity like that would happen? And if so, it sounds like the conditions would preclude that from happening. Would that be a normal condition for any church?
You know, I'm trying to think of the other churches that we've done. Typically, we're looking at larger churches and we wouldn't have that kind of condition on them. But for smaller storefront kind of churches, we do try to regulate them a little bit more closely because they just don't have very much space around them.
Thank you. One other question, and that is, I noticed in the staff report that there were a number of exceptions. Let's see if I can find them quickly. There are a number of exceptions as far as the building is concerned. I believe it was on the Planning Commission's staff report dated February 27, 2013, page three. Talks about the background and that there's an exception for the building's roofline, which encroaches over the public right-of-way, supported by narrow columns that are anchored into the sidewalk, brick planters that are in the public right-of-way. There's at least one sign that's in the public There's a driveway that doesn't lead anywhere, that exists for maybe a prior entrance or exit for the parking lot. You know, I recall back not that long ago that there was a church that was growing in capacity and they were changing the nature of their permit to allow for that additional capacity. And the city imposed numerous conditions on them to improve the aesthetics from the outside, as well as numerous safety concerns inside. And I'm just wondering, why aren't we asking for those things in this case with this particular building? I understand that, you know, what we're talking about is probably somebody just going in and using the building as is, no changes. But it seems like it's definitely a change in the type of use from prior uses, which were some sort of a retail business establishment, now one of a church. And I would think that that change in type of use would trigger staff to come back with recommendations that would be certainly more substantial than simply saying, well, we're going to leave it status quo and allow the encroachments to occur. I mean, I looked at it, and I'm not sure that you can get a, maybe you can. I didn't measure it, but it looked like you couldn't even get a wheelchair on the sidewalk around the building. But it looked like it was very tight. So, you know, these are things that I'm concerned with, and I would like to understand how staff evaluates this and determines that there's no need to make any recommendations for changes to the building.
Well, your initial statement was correct. They're doing very minimal changes to the interior of the building and no exterior work at all. So typically, when someone goes in and occupies a building as is, and there's no substantial expenditure to update or change that facility, we wouldn't ask for the kind of changes that you're talking about here. It's a non-conforming use. There's no real expansion of the use, and there's no change to the building. And so it's allowed to exist as a non-conforming use under the code.
Thank you. I did have one follow-up question from Mr. Ibarra. I apologize for not asking earlier. It was something that just kind of, as I'm talking about this, I'm thinking about. You're using what facility in Fullerton right now?
The Women's League.
Okay. And what's your typical attendance for service?
Really range from anywhere from 40 to 50 people. If it gets any, to assure the council members, if it gets any more than that, we would go to a two-service, two-service day on those occasions. That's normally what occurs when your occupancy or your capacity gets full. You start to monitor that, and you have the committee say, hey, you know, we need to go to two services here. And it's going to go a couple hours so that makes sure the people from the first service is already gone. And then the remainder of the congregation comes in.
Now, a typical day that you're having services, how many staff members or volunteer parishioners are there helping get things ready and maybe afterwards cleaning up and that sort of thing?
There's no limit. There's no limit to who can volunteer.
So you can maybe have 50, all 50 people pitch in and get things going?
We would love the whole 50 people to pitch in and help out on the church services.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments by, all right, members of council?
I'll go ahead and start. I had not heard of Victory Outreach prior to its coming to the attention of the council. And then early this month, I received a very detailed letter from a fellow by the name of Robert Hall. I don't think that's the same as Ron Hill, is it? Different people? In any event, this two-page, single-spaced letter went on and on about a lot of concerns and fears about Victory Outreach. It looked like a lot of the information had come from the internet. I would invite members of the audience to Google my name and see what comes up on the internet. I don't think that that person described on the internet bears any resemblance to the person that's sitting here tonight. So I have a tendency to discount accusations and speculation that comes from the internet. In any event, I went to visit the site. Mr. Modametti called me up and we spoke. He invited me to come over and take a look at the site, and I did. He has a beautiful store. If anybody wants beautiful ceiling moldings or medallions to hang your chandelier from, you want to go to Classic Ceilings on Commonwealth. Anyway, Mr. Modametti has been there for a very long time, and he is sincere in his concerns. When we talked about this, I promised him that I would ask the questions that he needed answers to. And I was able to do that with Mr. Ibarra. But you know a person by the company they keep. And here we have had Adam Moore, a respected member of neighborhoods in the southwest part of our city. Adam is not a Pollyanna. He is a police officer. He is an important member of our community. And what he says for me is golden. If he says he has a good experience with these people, I'm taking that to the bank. The same with Pam Keller. Pam reached out. She's been an altruistic, contributing member of our community for many, many years, went to school here. But she picked up the phone and she talked to Rosie Espinoza, who I know and I respect Rosie. And Rosie has had a good experience with this church. In watching the Planning Commission meeting last night, the meeting that occurred at the end of February, I was impressed that Kathleen Shanfield had called Pam Keller. And she checked with Chief Dan Hughes to check and see if there had been problems. So to my lights, this group has been vetted. And its press on the internet doesn't seem to be accurate. If our police chief says that the La Habra police chief has had no problem with these people in six years, we're either going to say that the La Habra police chief is lying, or we're going to agree to it. And I think when you look at the site, it is not entirely surrounded by residential. It's mixed use on a busy street. There is a residence to the west. There is a grocery store across the street. This used to be a car rental agency. It is not a beautiful piece of property. So now we have a group of people who want to come into the facility. I dare say that they're going to be using a lot of elbow grease to restore the property and to make it be a great church for their purposes. I'm very supportive of this project.
I would like to say that, let's see, I first met some folks from Victory Outreach out at Woodcrest. They were doing a community day out there. And Chief Hughes and a lot of the community members were out there as well, engaging that community. And so them being involved in Fullerton in that philanthropic way was my first personal experience with them. I also met with Mr. Modametti about his concerns as well. And Councilwoman Florrie, I thought, made a really good case. So I'll just keep this brief. We can't discriminate against churches based on them being a church, based on who they reach out to. As an aside, personally, I'm really thankful for faith-based organizations that reach a group of people that some of the rest of us couldn't reach. And I admire their philosophy that no one is beyond redemption, that everyone can change their lives. So I, as an aside, I really appreciate that. But as far as what we're dealing with here, I think the Planning Commission made a responsible decision. I think that, as the mayor indicated, Item 7 about the three verifiable complaints addresses safety concerns that we have. And I appreciate the comments from everyone. And I do understand fear of the unknown. I totally get that. But I think, I would wager to bet that you will be pleasantly surprised and that these will be some of the best neighbors you've ever had. And I'll be supporting this.
Okay. I also met with Mr. Modametti, and I appreciate his demeanor and nice way of presenting himself. And I would not fear too much for your business because you have a great business, and I think you'll do just fine. There's always a thing in our society, when you work with people who have had problems, you tend to brand the people doing the work the same way. And that's not fair, you know? It's, they're trying to help. And a lot of the people that are doing the help have had bad experiences, and they know how that happened, and they're helping. So I'm glad to see this effort. There isn't enough of it. If we have more of this effort, I think we'll have less crime. They do not pose any fear that way based on their past performance in other places. I did have an opportunity to work, meet them, I should say, when they were doing community service at a community service day with Chief Hughes organized, and chatted with them. And I thought they were very sincere in what they're trying to do. So I do support them being there. And I agree that they are going to be good neighbors. They're on the spot, they're being watched, and I'm sure that they will do their very best.
You know, it's a, it's tough when you have residents that don't want something to happen in their own neighborhood. And they feel like if it happens, then nobody's heard their plea, or if it doesn't happen, then you're squashing the, really, the rights of the individual who's, in this case, the applicant in the church. So I can appreciate both sides of that and the complexity of the issues at hand. But as has been stated, we can't discriminate simply because it's a church, or the type of church, or the way the church is going to be conducted. All we can do is put in place a framework that we think would work within the community for the type of operations, the hours, types of activities in general. And even those are somewhat subject to, you know, just the restrictions of the federal law and the freedom of religion. So, you know, 16, 17, 18 years ago, I had some issues with Victory Outreach in another town. But I don't think that that is the same Victory Outreach that exists today. I think, you know, times have changed. The people have changed. I think they've grown, they've become stronger. Are they perfect? No. None of us are perfect. So I really feel for the community around there that is, feel like they're going to have a negative impact. All I can say is that if you see something that you don't think is right, call the authorities, call code enforcement, call the police department. Those do get documented, and they will file an action against them to revoke their CUP, their permit. So I don't think, I don't think it's good to say no this right now. I think they should be allowed to open up and exist and give them an opportunity to prove themselves. And I think that that's the fair thing to do. I think that's the right thing to do. And if they prove us wrong, and then their permit will be revoked, and that'll be the end. They'll have to move along. And it's just that simple.
Thank you, Councilman Seaborn. This is a very difficult call for me because one of the requirements, I think, to meet the standard for a change in conditions to achieve a conditional use permit, is that you demonstrate that it's not going to have a negative impact on your neighbors, all the people surrounding particularly residential areas. This would be a change from the commercial use to a different kind of use. Part of the problem here is that we are limited in terms of assessing a church, the validity of a church, the requirements to meet that definition church. And I'm not going to opine because I don't have the evidence regarding this applicant. I do know in my experience that the mission of most churches is to grow, and that achieving a location and having a five-year lease where you have a maximum of 50 in your congregation could be a limiting factor. The second thing is, recently, we had our Hump Branch Library closed because of some complaints of a few employees that their personal safety was at risk. Now, I don't know objectively whether that's true or not. But I'm sure for those individuals, it was very real. And anything that they're perceiving as a threat to their safety is something that has very strong motivational value for any of us here. A reputation is an important thing, and I've heard from some of the council members here that Victory Outreach in recent times is certainly improving what had earlier been a reputation that some, and again, I'm not adding validity to this, but whether internet or not, that some people would object or claim that there were certain problems associated with Victory Outreach. So I listened to the incumbents, the long-term property owners, and those immediately adjacent to this property. And I, you know, I also spent some time at the county of Orange as a policy advisor. And I would receive many calls from individuals, different neighborhoods, where there were group homes, sober living homes, halfway houses, a number of other activities, which are all social good, which all have an impact and a bearing to help try to improve our neighborhoods. Some people can just reject it as a NIMBY issue. But the question is, and the question was at the county often, are some of these operations acting as a network really a business? Or is it really, truly a religious and, you know, church-like activity often that's involved? Now, again, I'm not applying any of this to the current applicant, but I'm just saying that this is part of what goes through everyone's assessment of something like this. In this case, I feel that there is really a requirement for a proposed new occupant for a period of five years to do what they can to win over the neighbors. And there's been sufficient time here for some of that to transpire, if it could transpire. Now, some people you're never going to be able to win over. But I see in this case, there's a very large majority of people who have strong concerns still in that immediate area. I know that we're limited in terms of what we can do, but we do have a more expansive role than the Planning Commission did in terms of supporting or opposing a proposed use. So for that reason, this kind of balancing act, yeah, I will not be supportive of this proposal. And we have, I would entertain a motion from someone on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to make a finding that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA review pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, and adopt resolution denying an appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's decision to approve a CUP allowing utilization of an existing commercial building as a church with associated onsite parking on property located at 824 East Commonwealth Avenue.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further comments?
Yes, I have one. There's a correction I'd like to make in the wording. Item 7. It talks about disturbances which have been caused by residents, staff, or business. Overnight use is prohibited, so there can't be any residents. I think residents should be changed to say members. Be more consistent that way. And if the second and the first would accept that as an amendment to the language, I would be supportive of the motion.
That makes sense.
It's fine.
If Jennifer amends her motion, I'll second the amendment.
She has accepted, yes. So with that modification, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? No. Four to one.
Mayor?
Congratulations.
Mayor, since item number 11 pertains to the council pretty much only, can we move to number 12?
Yeah, we do have to go back and get nine.
Oh.
Yep. Mayor, if I could just, yeah, we have number nine. There are still people in the audience related to the CDBG annual funding, representing some of the particularly nonprofit groups. Charles could make a, this is a required public hearing for the federal funding process. He could make a very brief presentation, if you'd like.
I can do whatever you want.
All right, Charles, yes, thank you.
I'll rip right through this, I guess. Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Fullerton City Council, Charles Kovak, Housing Division of the Community Development Department. The item before you is the Consolidated Plan and One-Year Action Plan related to the city's annual allocation of the Community Development Block Grant and the home funds that are available from HUD. Quickly, the Consolidated Plan, we require all jurisdictions receiving federal community funding to prepare a five-year consolidated plan. This five-year plan was done in 2010, so we're like in the third or fourth year of the cycle. We currently have to require to prepare an annual action plan, which is the item tonight. The Consolidated Plan, it just identifies certain needs of the community, such as provide decent housing, provide a suitable living environment to expand economic opportunities. The national objectives are similar: benefit low, moderate-income residents, aid in the prevention and elimination of blight and slums, and meet the other urgent community needs that pose an immediate threat with no other financial available resources. The five-year goals of the Consolidated Plan are related to neighborhood revitalization, infrastructure, housing, and public services, which is related to nonprofit agencies providing those public services. And the parentheses are showing some of the activities involved in that. Here's the crux of the problem, is that, as you can see, the entitlement from HUD from 2010 to 2013 has been decreasing annually. It's $425,000 that has decreased. The 2013 entitlement is an estimate based upon a 5% decrease from 2012. We still haven't heard from HUD. We don't, I don't expect to hear from HUD in the next week or two, and our action plan is due next week. So we're going to go with our estimate that we think is pretty safe. The entitlement, as you can see, is $1.208 million. We also plan on hoping to reprogram $155,000 and have a carryover of $5,000 from 2012-13, which is the current fiscal year. And that $5,000 is related to one of the nonprofits last year not meeting the requirements of the HUD reporting, and therefore not being able to achieve and receive their $5,000. Going back to the CDBG budget, $1.3 million total. Now, minus the debt service, which is part of the Section 108 loan that was done for the infrastructure improvements in the Richmond-Balencia-West Park area, the street improvements, the street medians, the sidewalks, I believe there was some lighting involved at Richmond Park. So that, we're paying back a loan on that. And that's the $678,000. And then backing out the rehab, the revolving account, which is $150,000, we're left with like $535,000 to program. So we went through a quick process, and quick being January to March, with our CDCC, the Community Development Citizens Committee. And this committee is an advisory committee to the council, which makes recommendations regarding how to spend the CDBG money, and especially related to the nonprofit allocations. And we had to review the guidelines earlier in January. We reviewed nonprofit and city applications. They heard the nonprofit and city presentations in February, and they made their recommendation to the city council in March, and that is the recommendation that's coming before you this evening. You know, the Consolidated Plan addresses public services, and these are some of the organizations that they like to target: general public services, youth programs, senior programs, and homeless programs. And these are some of the nonprofit groups in parentheses that address those type of services. Here's a little quick graph, just to show you, 2012, which is the 12-13 current fiscal year, and 13, which is the 13-14 fiscal year. Just a comparison of where the recommendations came in. As you can see, this year, or I should say, for next year, the homeless allocation, the recommendation was higher. So was senior activities. Youth was down, and that's just because Boys and Girls Club did not apply this year. They received $30,000 last year. They didn't apply this year because they weren't unsure if they could meet the HUD standards. So only the YMCA, in terms of youth, applied. And that's why there's just a significant decrease. Fair housing is very important to the CDBG. It deals with the tenant landlord relations. And per HUD, fair housing has been moved from a public service to a mandatory administration cost. So we must have, always have a fair housing, public service component. Also, we have city departments. We have HCR admin. The CDCC recommended funding and housing and community development administration at the requested amount of $240,000, which included $20,000 for fair housing, as I just explained in the prior slide. And these activities that are associated with that include administering the CDCC, the participation program, the process and everything. Administers the housing rehab program, monitor program, compliance of nonprofit subrecipients. That's like a quarter, they submit quarterly reports, and we have to make sure everything's okay, because HUD will be auditing us after that fiscal year, after this fiscal year, to ensure that we have complied with everything. Administering the home projects, which includes inspections, and prepare all the required documents, such as the one-year action plan that you're addressing tonight, the Consolidated Plan that fortunately I'll have to prepare for a couple of years, and the CAPR, which is the performance-based document, which shows, did we meet all our goals and objectives? We have the HCR admin rehab, which is slightly different. This deals more with dealing with, like, lead point, excuse me, rehab program, dealing with the lead-based paint reduction program, administering all these housing programs, which I'll just briefly go over in a second. But the CDCC recommended a budget at $125,610, with a portion of that, $25,000, to replenish our depleted lead-based paint reduction program. Also, we have a revolving account of $150,000 that we want to carry over, obviously, to the next fiscal year. Quickly moving along, just briefly, these are some of the programs associated with the rehab admin, community grant program, the block improvement grant, the rehabilitation program, and then the formerly mentioned lead reduction program. So those are kind of like a description of what occurs within the program. We also get a home allocation. And similar to the CDBG allocation, you can see there's a significant decrease. And a lot of this has to do with the federal sequestration for this year, because we were expecting the amount to remain stagnant, similar to last year. But based upon what happened on March 1st with the sequestration, there's anticipated 5% decrease. So similar to the CDBG, the home, we're estimating a 5% decrease. And as you can see, over, you know, $400,000 has decreased from 2010 to 2013 entitlement. The home administration is $38,000, which is roughly, obviously, it's 10% max of the allocation. The additional $340,000, we're recommending be earmarked for affordable housing on an identified project that we'll bring back later for the council's approval, or consider and approval. The recommendations is to approve the fiscal year 2013-14 One-Year Strategy Action Plan, to approve the 2013-14 CDBG budget, approve the 2013-14 home program budget as detailed in the plan, and then authorize staff to submit the plan to HUD, requesting the approximately, the dollar amounts of $1.2 million for CDBG, and roughly almost $400,000 for home. And then also authorize the community development director to make adjustments to the CDBG and home funding distribution if the CDBG home funds received are less than the anticipated amounts. So instead of coming back, if we missed it by five, $10,000, we're asking for the council's blessing, so to speak, to allow us to adjust the numbers. And then also authorize the community development director to execute all agreements that we have to prepare with the nonprofit agencies. And with that, I know we probably still have some nonprofits that are still here this evening. Plus, we have staff from the Housing Division that would be there to answer any questions that you might have regarding the process, the programs, or the funding.
Mr. Kovak, I had a question. If you go back to slide number 14?
14, okay, thank you.
I see that you had, let's see, actually, I'm sorry, go back to 13.
13.
There you go. The $125,610, I'm not sure that I'm looking in the right place, but what I see in the, what's dated is the May 7th, 2013, 13-14 One-Year Strategic Plan shows, let's see, that's page four, shows $292,500 for housing rehab admin includes housing rehab project revolving account lead-based paint?
Yeah, I think that if you add them all up, those three numbers right there would come up to the $292,000. Is that the mark number that you mentioned?
Okay.
Yeah. It's a hundred and, roughly, 142. So you add up to 150, that'd be 292.
Gets close, but not...
Is it off?
Yeah, a little bit.
Here's my math is solid.
I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right numbers, that's all.
Yeah.
And if I could ask about the, on that same page, it goes into what the CDCC recommendations were for public service programs and the funding recommendation. Does that recommendation simply come out of discussion with the members, or is there some other driving force?
It's interesting, because this is my first year participating in this process, and it did come from discussions. I mean, some of the questions and the research that went into it from the committee members was quite impressive and everything. So there was a lot of debate and everything. The committee members at the end really wanted to have a kind of like a competition, make, get more, you know, get more applicants next year and everything. And that's one of the things they kind of gave as a directive to me, was to try to get more applications for next year for the public services, so they can be even more choosier, for lack of a better word.
As far as the allocations go, I mean, that's something that they came up with, or I saw something, there was a request for funding. Is there, so there's a grant process that groups go through?
Yeah, they all submit an application, and the applications are distributed to the committee members, and they review the applications, and then the presentations. And then once we get down to the actual discussion of who gets what and everything, it's pretty much amongst themselves. We don't make a recommendation, staff. We want to let them just come out and say, this is what we think. And there was some debate as to who should get what. And as you can see, not everybody got what they wanted to. And there's reasons for that that we could go into, if you have any questions regarding. But, you know, there was a first, they made three recommendation, a three-tier recommendation, because they wanted to, you know, not have to go back to the committee if we were short on funds. They said if we, if we're $20,000 off, and we get less than $1.2 million, then therefore we can just, you know, slice off the third tier. And then if the second tier is in jeopardy, then, you know, well, we'd have to go back to the committee, and they would maybe reallocate something.
Okay. So that, kind of looking at the total there, total public service funding of $125,800. And so that's a number that they came up with based upon the assumptions of what would be granted to the city?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Should note that that list is on page four of the staff report, the full list of the recommendations from the committee.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I'm looking at page five. It says, "Reprogrammed Home Funds." What does that mean? How do we get funds reprogrammed?
Those are funds that haven't been used and everything. And we, and so they're still, we're just reprogramming them into this fiscal year, a fiscal year of 14, 13, 14. They weren't used during '12 and '13, probably because we don't have a project in line right now to use those funds, or, you know, it could be some other reason. But we just haven't used them yet. So we want to reprogram next year, so we can, they'll be available for next year.
And were those funds taken into account in the allocations to the various entities?
No, it's separate. This is kind of separate from those entities.
Oh, we're carrying that over for reallocation next year?
Yeah, but not to the entities, just for an affordable housing project.
Oh, I see. It's a category that wasn't filled last, some pastime. So it's carrying over until it gets the right use?
Until you use it, exactly.
Okay. Looking at, well, it's one of the attachments. We're approving money for a fair housing program that operates out of Long Beach. How do they serve this city?
They have, they have wide coverage. I think they're just offices based in Long Beach, but they address the Orange County area, too. They're in our, they're in our second year right now of being part of the submittal and everything. They, we had one from Orange County last year, but the committee did not, and then eventually the city council went with the Long Beach one, and still. But they, I think they're located in Long Beach. They do a lot of their services here in Orange County. They just recently had a workshop at the library, I think, a week or two ago. So, oh, committee member, Zoot Velasco's here, if he wants to.
I serve on the CDBG committee for two years now. Probably the only thing that Chief Pat and Mayor Whitaker had in common was me. So I was first appointed by Chief Pat and then reappointed by Mayor Whitaker. I like to make that joke, sorry. So one thing that happened in my tenure there is last year, the Orange County group that does this, and by the way, this is required by HUD to do, and the Orange County group that does this did not submit their proposal on time. And so it was put out to other groups to submit. And there was, there was maybe some feeling that they weren't taking us very seriously. And so it was put out to bid, basically, and Long Beach came in with a lower bid and more services. And so we decided to go with Long Beach as a recommendation to council last year, and they did a good job. And so we continued that this year. So that's the answer to that.
Did they give you a report as to how they used the money?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Charles is first year here, and he's done a really excellent job, but he's had big shoes to fill coming in for staff that kind of left in the middle of redevelopment and everything else going on.
Okay. I had one other question.
I got your back, Charles.
Lead-based paint. It says prevention, but it's probably removal. We haven't used lead-based, lead-based paint for probably 50 years. Is there still some removal going on? What's the deal?
I believe so. Steve Alvarado, our housing inspector, can address that question.
By the way, the president of our commission is here as well, sitting behind me, wanted to mention.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, anything built pre-1978 is presumed to be lead-based paint. We still are finding it. We test every project that we are going to touch the exterior paint, whether it be the fascia board, eaves, stucco. We test it for exterior lead. And interior also, we are finding it in the tile and asbestos every once in a while.
Okay, so it's still a problem then?
It is a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question for you as well, Charles. The significant amount of money for debt service, the Section 108, the 15-year borrowing for the Richmond area, what year are we in now? Do you know?
Uh, good question. I think it goes, yeah, I think we go in 19, if I'm correct. 2019 is the final payment.
Yeah, that takes a very significant chunk of the funding here, doesn't it?
Yeah, that takes a very significant chunk of the funding here, doesn't it?
Yeah, luckily it reduces every year, like last year was 703,000, this year it's 678, or next year it's 678,000, and then 650,000. So it does reduce, the interest comes down, so more available money each year.
All right. Thank you.
Charles, if I could, I had one quick question. Can you tell me about the first-time homebuyer program? Is that still in play, or has it been changed?
No, that kind of, I think that program died out, if I'm correct, in 2003, and that's because the housing prices kept getting so high that the amount of money that we had to put into it was, you know, just crazy dollars, so we thought it wasn't really cost-effective.
So money better spent in other programs?
Yes.
Looks like we're at the point where we can receive a public comment on this. This is a public hearing item, so I would invite any individuals wishing to speak to this item to come forward.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I'm Holly Hagler, the CEO of Senior Surf, and I'm speaking on behalf of our CDB application to provide hot nutritious meals at the beautiful, wonderful new senior community center across the street. And it's just, it's so wonderful. We will be serving, we serve 60 seniors a day there, and that is rising. And they receive, in order to receive the meals, they come out of their homes where they might otherwise be isolated and alone. They are typically low income, and over the course of the year, we'll serve 400 different seniors. The goals of the program are to alleviate poor nutrition among low-income seniors and to promote socialization and physical activity. And as you probably well know, isolation is a huge issue for older adults and leads to many health-related issues. We measure outcomes of our programs through a third party, and the outcomes are improved well-being, increased nutrition, significantly more friends, which reduces the isolation, and they report that they feel much more connected to their community and to the city. So thank you for your support.
I have one question of you. These are strictly Fullerton residents, or are there neighboring communities represented?
By far, it's Fullerton residents.
But not exclusively, right?
No, nobody can be excluded from the program. And one other comment I wanted to make is that in this time of sequestration, your support is really, really important. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Larry Haynes. I am with Mercy House, and first off, I wanted to thank the city and thank the council for your longstanding support of our good work with the homeless. Secondly, I also wanted to thank the committee and the staff for their recommendations, and respectfully request that you accept their recommendations as presented. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council members. I'm Maria Mazengavianeda from Pathways of Hope, and I first wanted to thank you for your longstanding support as well for Pathways of Hope and for all we do, and for your consideration for the CDBG money. Our money is going to be used specifically for our life skills class. Always our goal is to get our families and individuals into permanent housing. These life skills classes help them ensure that they're going to be successful. It's teaching them those basic skills, budgeting and financial management, health, safety. If you're living in a car or in a hotel and you're eating every meal out, you forget what it is to buy groceries when you have a refrigerator or you have a stove that you can cook on. So we're teaching them those skills that they may have forgotten or that they may have never learned because they haven't had a support system. So we want to give them every skill they have, every opportunity to be supportive, successful, and self-sufficient. So I thank you for your support and of this. Thanks.
Seeing no further speakers, I will close the public hearing portion of this and bring the item back to council. Yes?
I have one more question for Mr. Kovak. If the first-time homebuyer program is dead, can you tell me how tenant-based rental assistance, acquisition, rehab, and new construction programs are going? Is there a lean to go more one way or the other, or what's really our focus?
Well, I'm going to ask Sylvia Chavez to come up here. She kind of runs that little program that is...
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Tenant-based rental assistance program is used for home funds, and those are the funds that we were using for the first-time homebuyer program, and that ended about, like, Chelsea 10 years ago. The tenant-based rental assistance program was a three-year program, so that's coming to an end. We probably have eight tenants still receiving that, but it's going to be completely ended in January. I'm sorry, what was your other question?
Can you tell me about acquisition, rehab, and new construction programs? Are those receiving money, or is really this home program budget strictly for the rental assistance?
We do have it, where we, like that reprogrammed money that we showed on there, carried over under home. We're hoping that we get a developer, Chodo perhaps, and get an affordable housing, and it's through acquisition rehab that we will use those home funds for, under affordable housing.
So you're hoping to take the 305,000, be able to purchase a piece of property that has a building on it, rehab it, and turn around and sell it for low income, or use it for low income?
It's actually rental.
Oh, okay. And would the city continue to own that, or?
No.
So we just rehab it and walk away?
That would be brought back to you.
Okay. Just conceptually, what's the money going to be used for if the other things are dying out? Okay.
We've done several of those projects already. Richmond Court, the one on Valencia and Richmond, the 16 unit, that was one, the Franklin on the West Side, and then the Roberta Apartments were all used with those funds, acquisition, rehab, rental.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One quick question. Are these monies loaned out and subject to repayment? Is that, making these...
Just the rehab ones, right? Yeah, just the rehab.
Otherwise, it's a grant?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, it appears we've exhausted questions by the council, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2013-14 one-year strategy action plan.
Are you going to take each one separately, Bruce?
Yeah, it really looks...
I think we could actually move the recommendation as identified in the agenda letter.
Right. I was just trying to open it, so someone would take it from here, but yes, I agree with you, all in one motion is the way to go.
Rather than reading it, I'll just refer to the agenda and move to approve the six recommendations as outlined in our agenda letter.
Seconded. So moved and seconded. Any final comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous.
Well, nobody's fainted or gone to sleep, so we should continue. Greg's all wound up.
I'm concerned about the air conditioner a little bit, but...
Mayor Whitaker?
Sure.
We have an applicant for, could we move to item number 12 so that the applicant can go home?
I have no objection.
The reason I ask is number 11 is strictly a council thing, and...
I'd second that motion to move it forward.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have concurrence? All right, we'll do that. Item number 12.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item is, as we've seen before, this is a request to authorize staff to accept an application. The municipal code specifies the use of a specific plan for a 40-acre site minimum or site, if it's smaller, that's acceptable to the city council, if there are unique characteristics, a unique design objectives, unique mix of uses. So the application before you this evening is for 620 South Roosevelt. It is an irregular-shaped parcel. It's actually directly across the channel from the recently entitled Watt Project. This site that we're discussing this evening is accessed both off of Roosevelt Avenue as well as the Jefferson-Roslin frontage. The specific plan request, again, this is just to allow staff to receive an application to review it and bring a project back for you, but what is anticipated, to be consistent with the R16 zoning of the surrounding neighborhood, would be a small lot, detached, single-family residential product. What is unique to this site, as you can see in the aerial, is you have this commercial property that fronts on Euclid and that is totally landlocked. The building goes all the way up to the street frontage. The north-south alley actually ends just north of this property, so the property owner at 614 Euclid has both parking and an access easement over this property on Roosevelt. So any future development at this time, we need to accommodate that access point as well as parking. So it is a little bit of an oddity, and it is unique, and given that, as well as the desire to do a small lot project, we do have an action in the general plan to do a small lot zoning ordinance. It's not something staff's been able to bring forward to you at this point, so we're in support of the use of a specific plan for that purpose, and we would request your authorization to accept an application.
So the commercial property will continue to exist?
The commercial property will continue to exist, yes.
And you'll have to work in an easement somehow rather than access? Okay.
Any questions of Heather there? Yes. Yes, as I look at the map, I think we need to include the cul-de-sac. That's actually necessary to the plan, as I understand it, and that requires some kind of abandonment of that and maybe replacement, so there can be turnaround, and there is another complicating issue.
Certainly, yes. This is just the outline that the map draws for me, so, but yes, you're correct, the parcel, a future project could likely include the cul-de-sac.
This is the second project, the second specific plan that has come before the council since I came on board in December.
Correct.
And so is there a reason why specific plans should be 40 acres? I mean, if we're going to be looking at so many specific plans, and there's one that exists south of the project, so it's another one that was less than 40 acres, so why is the 40-acre requirement in that at all?
Something that's been in the code for some time, I think is worth looking at when we have a chance, and some staff time to figure out what is a realistic minimum size, given that we are a fairly built-out city, and 40 acres really doesn't apply to much anymore. So it's something we can definitely take a look at.
I was just going to concur with that. I mean, it seems like it's an unnecessary hurdle that kind of gets in the way of staff addressing the issues and moving the project forward. I know I've had this discussion before with Director Hoppe and while on the dais, and there's a couple other things in the code that need to be cleaned up as well, that have to do with abandonments and dedications and those sorts of things. In fact, I think Roslin was the, right there was the big discussion that we had about dedications or abandonments, so, yeah, I definitely concur with that. Little bit of a sidebar there, but thank you for your presentation. Looks like a good project, from what I've heard of it. It sounds like something I want to see more of, so I'd say, let's do it.
I would like to move that the community development department be authorized to accept applications proposing a specific plan district zoning designation on the property located at 620 South Roosevelt Avenue.
Point of order, sir. I think we have to have public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, the motion can be made. Yeah.
Can vote on it.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded, and I would invite now public comments on this item. Anyone wishing to speak?
Mayor, this will be under 30 seconds, I promise.
All right.
The boys look so frustrated, I know. I'm trying to keep down my promise.
Okay. You guys are all doing a great job, and I include you, Mayor, I mean that.
I'm not frustrated, I'm kind of overheating.
I know, you guys are tired. Okay.
Yeah.
One quick thing. Greg, we sit on that council, and when you go down Euclid, it just seems like everything is in pockets. And you brought that up, commercial, residential, you know what I mean? Then you have commercial, and everything's so pocketed there. And I just want to say real quick, I think these developments that you guys have approved, especially the fact that they're for sale homes, is tremendous, and there's still a lot of abandoned, you know, commercial properties not being utilized, and I just hope we keep that in mind, you know, as trying to make it uniform. I don't even know what this proposal is, I mean, you guys have a little bit more insight, but trying to keep it uniform there in Euclid would be great. And I know, hopefully, you're still keeping with that from the downtown corridor project and keeping your eye on that. That's all I wanted to say. So all this stuff is good. Thank you.
Under 30 seconds.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back, and I did have a quick question for Mr. Hoppe as well. Just to leapfrog on the earlier comments, how typical is a small, specific plan like this in more mature cities where they're operating infill projects? Is this, I guess I haven't paid attention in other cities.
They're certainly becoming more popular in the built-out cities than newer cities where they're still developing, where there's lots of open acreage, the 40 acres is pretty common. I would agree with Ms. Allen that we need to look at that limit. It's really based on a code that's probably, John, how old? 76 or so, or even older. It's probably a 30 or 40-year-old component of the code that we just need to look at.
So this would probably still be fairly unusual, right?
Yeah. This small is probably a little bit unusual.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Any other comments by council? Seeing none, we do have a motion that's been seconded on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous.
Okay. Here, I believe you'd be on...
Nobody wants to talk about my item. Come on.
It's your pleasure of the council, but item 11 would be where you'd be going next.
Yeah, okay. Let's do it. Let's cover 11. Yes, Gretchen, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Gretchen Beatty, Director of Human Resources, and I'm back this evening to revisit a topic that you first discussed two meetings ago, and you had requested, or two members of council had requested, that we bring this back to have further discussion on possible elimination or reduction of retirement and health benefits for city council members. This slide shows a table, a recap of those benefits that are currently available to council. There are two options for retirement for those members who receive pay. There's either a defined contribution plan or a PERS option. There's availability of health insurance with a maximum of a family contribution for PPO of up to $26,000 per year. Dental insurance, again, the maximum is based on the family contribution for the PPO coverage of $545 per year. Vision, 257 for family. Life insurance, 13 in the EAP or Employee Assistance Program is $24 per year. Just to recap, all council members currently either waive all or part of the benefits that are available to you, and no current council members receiving any medical coverage through the city. The rest of this presentation I divided into options that I believe that you could consider separately. There are two based on retirement and two with, one with multiple parts based on health insurance. The first option is the consideration of amending the CalPERS contract to exclude future council members from eligibility. This would require, if you directed staff to move forward with this, we would contact CalPERS and ask for the appropriate amendment documents that we would bring back to you to approve per the CalPERS amendment process. What the result would be is the defined contribution plan, or the FICA replacement plan, would become the sole option for retirement benefits for council members receiving pay. The annual cost reduction would be $161 per member per year, and the elimination of the possibility of long-term liability for the defined benefit plan would also result from exercising this option. The other retirement option is to implement a new... The annual cost reduction would be $161 per member per year, and the elimination of the possibility of long-term liability for the defined benefit plan would also result from exercising this option. The other retirement option is to implement a new defined contribution FICA replacement plan for council members. Our current plan, we split, or we share the federally defined contribution of seven-and-a-half percent. Fifty percent is paid by the city, fifty percent is paid by the employees who participate in this plan. It is possible to introduce another plan that is paid 100% by employees, or if it applied only to council, by council members. This would result in a reduction of 400, or $338 per member, or 499 if it's combined with option one, where this becomes the sole option for council members. There is no long-term liability with this plan, so it would be completely eliminated in terms of retirement for city council members. In order to implement this, should council give us direction to move forward, we would go to ICMA, who is our current plan administrator, and work with setting up the new plan with the new parameters and bring it back to city council for approval. For health benefits, my option three, I've divided into four, or five different subparts, starting from the most significant change, and that would be to eliminate council member eligibility for all health benefits. That would reduce the annual exposure of $27,000 per member per year. It would apply to current members in future terms and to future members. And one thing we would need to consider should we move forward with this option is the possible impacts of the Affordable Care Act or the Healthcare Reform Act. To accomplish this, staff would need to propose an amendment to Resolution 8485 that currently sets the council benefits that are in direct relationship to those provided to the management group. A slightly lesser version of this option is to limit city contributions for council members to a fixed cost. If, for example, you chose $500 per month per member, you could reduce the exposure to cost by $21,000 per member. This would apply to current members in future terms, also in future members. And we would need to, in this one, consider the potential impacts of the ACA or the Healthcare Affordability Act, in that the act not only requires that an employer provide coverage, but also that it be affordable. So we would want to make sure whatever limit is selected would meet that requirement if council falls under the, is determined to fall under the Healthcare Reform Act. Another option for a modification of healthcare benefits is to limit the city contributions for council members to, for medical and dental plans to single-party for the least expensive plan, and then set that so it be annually reviewed by council to reset the amount every year, so that you're no longer tied to the management group. If you did this, the current least expensive plan is the Kaiser HMO and the dental HMO plan. This would result in a cost reduction of about $20,000 per member per year. And again, it would apply to current members in future terms and future members, and there is no expected impact under the Healthcare Reform Act for this option.
Does single-party contribution mean that family coverage would be excluded?
You could either exclude eligibility or just say the contribution is only linked to the single-party plan. So regardless of which tier you choose, you only have a single-party contribution, and the rest is to be covered by the member. Another version of this option is to limit healthcare, I'm sorry, council member eligibility to the HMO, medical and dental plans. Again, subjecting this to annual review where you set your contributions. This would potentially reduce costs by $7,400 per member per year, and it does apply to current members in future terms and future members as well. On this option, again, there is no ACA impact anticipated. And the final option on the health benefits is to eliminate city contributions or eligibility for city council members to, who are eligible for Medicare coverage or other employer-sponsored healthcare. The possible reductions in cost range up to $27,000 per member, depending on who your council members are and what their eligibility may be to other sources for healthcare. And again, this change would apply to future terms and future members. And there are potential impacts that would come under the ACA, so we would have to consider those. And I think this option could be combined with option 3A, 3B, or 3C as well. And then the final option that I've outlined is elimination of the opt-out benefit. This is the benefit that is provided for those members who do not select healthcare through the city, but instead are eligible for a cash payment of $100 per pay period. So to eliminate this provision would reduce cost exposure of $26,000 per member per year. And like all the rest, it applies to current members in future terms and future members. I did have an error in my staff report that I mentioned that there were potential Affordable Care Act implications on this. There are not, and all that would need to be done to enact this change is to amend the Resolution 8485.
Is this an error too? You said $26,000, but it says $2,600 here.
$2,600 is the right number. I missed that.
Okay, thank you.
And one quick question, Gretchen. All of these, any of these changes, as you stated, would be effective for current members' future terms and future members' terms, but those of us who serve now could opt in or could opt out of any of this at this point?
Absolutely, that's correct.
It just takes proactive movement from us.
Well, it sounds like all of us have been proactive since none of us are covered with the healthcare plans at present time.
For healthcare, I mean, many take the $100 pay period cash out for health benefits.
True. Okay. I was just talking about the health coverage itself.
Happy to answer any questions or move away.
Yes, what does the, if there is an average or typical employee pay for healthcare? Do we share that cost? Are we doing that now? Or does the city pick up all the healthcare costs for employees?
No, the, all employees contribute something towards healthcare. We have different plans for our PPO plan. For the last many years, we have been splitting premium increases 50/50 with employees. So employees who opt into the PPO coverage are making significant contributions towards their coverage. The city's contribution is still greater than that we contribute towards the HMO plans, because the HMO plans are lesser-priced. For a long period of time, there were no contributions on the HMO plans about five, six, eight years ago. I don't really remember exactly when. We introduced fixed employee contributions at $10, $20, and $40, depending on your tier of coverage, single, two-party, or family. Beginning this year, city employees, all city employees have begun picking up 50% of premium increases for each year. This was the first year that that came into effect for the HMO plans. So I don't have a number off the top of my head for an average. I know that's going to be in our budget, so give me a couple weeks and I'll have an answer for that.
Well, kind of where I'm going is, are we out of sync with the other employees in what we're receiving by not sharing in those costs?
You're currently linked to the management group, so your contributions are the same as that for the management group. And with slight variations between the groups, the groups are very similar. So you would be very similar to all of the other represented groups.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Gretchen?
I have a quick question. I believe I asked this last time, but I think it bears asking again and the response, and that is, are there other part-time employees, or at least in theory, part-time employees who have the option to receive similar benefits? Maybe not the total package, but healthcare is an option that they can opt into or opt out of, dental, vision. Are those types of benefits offered to part-time employees?
They're offered to a small number of part-time employees who are what we consider regular employees, or in classifications represented by our bargaining units. The majority of our regular, our part-time employees are what we call non-regular employees who are hourly employees. They are not currently eligible to participate in our healthcare plans. With the oncoming changes under healthcare reform, we're anticipating, without some fairly significant changes, there will be a number of those who will become eligible, but we're working towards limiting that number as much as possible.
Okay. And could you give me some idea of what the role of those employees would be? I mean, are these, you know, police cadets or what?
Police cadets, fire utility drivers at the library, library pages. There are a number of parks and rec employees that support all of their programs that are non-regular employees. We do have a few non-regular employees scattered throughout the organizations that fulfill some specialized roles.
Okay, so it's really, it's a wide variety. It's not one particular service or one particular group. It really is a wide variety.
Correct.
Thank you.
And a follow-up to his question. What would be the lowest number of average hours by which someone, a part-time, could qualify for healthcare benefits?
Under the Reform Act, beginning January 1, 2014, an employee who works an average of 30 hours per week is considered full-time and considered eligible for benefits.
So for those individuals who are part-time and eligible for benefits, what is the lowest number of hours that they could qualify? Is it any number of hours?
Well, we're doing our best to do, change our scheduling, so we're keeping them under 25 hours.
Okay.
And there may be some variations in that. We have what's called look-back periods, where we'll go back and we'll figure our averages. So working 40 hours in one pay period doesn't make you automatically eligible. If you're hired to work for 30 or more hours, you're, you'll become eligible. Or if you work in the look-back period an average of 30 or more hours, you'll be eligible for a similar, an equal period going forward. So we are, we've been working with the departments to try to refine that, so that when we get to that date, when we do our look-back period, we'll have as small a number as possible who qualify for benefits.
Thank you, that helps. Any other?
I'm sorry, something else that occurred to me. You know, considering how many of these potential options have some sort of ACA implication that needs to be looked at, is it possible that the, as a council, we could say, all right, no more benefits for future council members, and then the ACA comes to fruition, we look at it and find out, oh, we have to offer it? Is that a distinct possibility at this point?
It's a possibility, but I don't know how certain it is. And one of the things that we're looking at now is how your pay is issued. Under the municipal code, it's very clearly a monthly stipend. In our payroll system, I understand, it's broken down in hourly allotments, and you're paid on the basis of 80 hours per pay period. That would make you eligible under healthcare reform. So we're looking at how to undo that as would be appropriate under the federal law, that we're not, and we recognize that you don't likely work less than 30 hours per week. And I don't know that it was the intention of healthcare reform to apply the eligibility requirements to elected officials.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions, but I'm happy to get the discussion started by making a motion.
Sure, yeah, we'll bring discussion back to council.
I know you want to do public comments, but for the sake of discussion, and we'll see if we can get through this quickly, and if not, then we won't. Because I would like to move option 1, 2, 3, and 4. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been seconded. Any further discussion before I open for public comments?
I would have one question as to whether this includes council appointments to other bodies which provide similar benefits. Would that also be eliminated under this? In other words, you are not getting the benefits from the city, and it looks great, but then you get the same benefits from one of the entities to whom you're appointed.
I wish it could, but we're, from my end, I've asked that question, because other bodies that we serve on do offer not only, you know, stipends and retirement, but also healthcare. And we're legally, from what I understand, precluded from it, because we don't, we're not the, we're not that decision-making body. So the Orange County Sanitation District or Water District, they would have to make that decision.
I disagree with that. I think we could, as a council, require that remuneration be repaid to the city. And it'd be, I don't agree with that at all. We can, if we make an appointment, I think we can preclude that.
Appointee from taking it.
I don't agree with that statement at all. And I think in fairness, you have to take that into account.
Well, we do have our city attorney here, so I'd love to hear what he has to say about it.
The law indicates that with respect to the establishment or removal of benefits, the body to whom you're appointed makes that determination. You, as a body, could impose conditions on your appointment. To that extent, if you impose those conditions, the person accepting those conditions could be potentially subject to it. However, it must be prospective and not current. But again, the organizations themselves will look somewhat askance at that, because it will limit whom might be appointed, or but various bodies.
Well, my comment is, I can support option number four. I'd like to see the motion broken up into four parts. For example, I can support option four. I don't think that a person who opts out of benefits should receive any kind of stipend because they're otherwise covered. I cannot support option three, eliminating council members' eligibility for all health benefits. You know, I'm fortunate enough to be a participant in Medicare, so I have healthcare benefits, but I would be reluctant to tie the hands of future council members from having healthcare coverage. Until we had the Affordable Healthcare Act, there were 41 million people in this country who did not have basic healthcare insurance, and I think that's a deplorable situation. That said, I could support option 3C, which is to limit a council member's eligibility to HMO, medical and dental plans, only at current contribution rates, with future increases being considered by council on an annual basis. To me, that is a measured approach, and I can support that. I would also support option 3D, to eliminate city contributions for council members eligible for Medicare or employer-sponsored healthcare. So, for example, I would presume that you have healthcare benefits. I don't know if you have private insurance otherwise, or it's through your husband's employment.
It's through my husband's employment.
Okay, so, you know, let's suppose you have a single mother with two children, and she has no independent healthcare benefits. I would not want to circumscribe that person's ability to have healthcare. I think that all of us put in many more hours than the average part-time employee does, and I think that, if nothing else, we learned a couple of weeks ago when we were at city council, that we are at the low end of the scale compared to other cities. What is our monthly? Is it $650 a month for our?
I think we're at $750.
Are we at $750 now? Okay, so we earn $750 a month, or approximately 150 bucks a week for, that's not right, 100, maybe 180 dollars a week for doing this job. So, you know, given option one, I can support option one, because I really don't have much So, you know, given option one, I can support option one, because I really don't have much of a dog in the fight. I'll give you the benefit of my personal experience. By virtue of my having eight years of CalPERS service credits, as of last year, when I called up to ask about what that monthly benefit would be, it would be $123 per month. That's not a whole lot. That said, $123 a month isn't enough either for me to object to that, so I could support option one. Although, what did you say the annual cost for the city, per council person, is $166, something like that?
I think it was 499. It's about 6% of pay, a little less than 6%.
Okay, 499 per month?
Per year.
Per year, per council person.
Correct.
$500 a month.
In today's dollars.
Yes.
I would look to some simplification here and some alternatives. For example, option 3C says to limit council member eligibility to HMO medical and dental plans only. I would say that limit it to the cost of that, and if the council member wants a different plan, I'm not enthusiastic about HMOs, because of bad experiences, that any difference in cost to a different plan would be borne by the council member. But we deal in terms of a number, not just eliminating the eligibility. Similarly, I would look at option 1 and 2, that let somebody choose, but limit the amount to whatever one or the other is, the council person pays the difference. Or possibly altogether, you look at some maximum amount of money, and then the council person can choose how it might be applied. Would seem more fair, because we all have different circumstances. I'm a little concerned, though, that if we eliminate all these benefits, we're pretty much precluding a lot of people from becoming council people, especially young people that don't have the coverages. And we see, and then we'd have a council of elderly people on Medicare, or people that are fortunate enough to have the coverages through other means. And I don't, I don't like that. I want to keep it open. As it is with this council, we're taking advantage of very little of what's available. And I like the idea of choices. I like the idea of keeping the field open to people who might want to be on the council, and not making it difficult for other people to serve.
Yeah, I really, I mean, I hear what you're saying, I just disagree with it. I don't think this does preclude folks from different walks of life for serving. We're not talking at all about the monthly stipend of 750, or however much it is. We're only talking about health benefits and the retirement benefit. And most part-time employees, well, let's just, part-time employees outside of government rarely, if ever, receive healthcare benefits. And so I don't think, I don't think that, I just don't, I think if we were talking about stipends, if we were talking about getting rid of everything, then I could see a little more agreement with your comment, but not with regards to healthcare and the retirement.
Why are we talking about part-time at all? I consider this full-time. I think it depends on the individual, how many hours you put in. And I think altogether, I would put in myself in the full-time category.
Well, Doug, the reason that I can support your suggestion regarding the HMO and limiting the city's contribution to what the amount of the HMO, the reason I can support that is because I have the personal experience of having been a participant in a PPO plan with Blue Cross. And then when I did not, was not re-elected in 2002, I switched over to an HMO plan. I didn't have to change one of my doctors. PPO plans as well as HMO were both accepted by St. Jude Heritage, and I actually loved the HMO a lot better than the PPO, because no longer did I get those awful EOBs, those explanation of benefits, which are virtually indecipherable. And the HMO was just a lot easier. We all have to be residents of Fullerton, which means that all of us could avail ourselves of St. Jude Heritage. And if we decided we didn't want to do it, then we could pay for the difference for the PPO plan. So I could support your suggestion modifying option 3C. I can support 3D, and I can support option 4.
And I really think this comes down to philosophy. What's your philosophy of city council, public service? And granted, Doug, you know, we all, I mean, we live, breathe, eat Fullerton in our service here, and we'll never get paid enough to match the passion that each of us have for this community. But it's just my opinion that it's not right to put the taxpayers on the hook for healthcare benefits and retirement for us. So if, with me, it's just, it's on principle. It's not that it's $499 in today's dollars. It's not that it's 30 hours a week or 80 hours a week. It's a philosophical thing.
I have a question for Gretchen. When do we anticipate having more information on the ACA implications and what that means?
In terms of how it would apply to council?
Correct.
We're working on getting an answer to that as quickly as possible, so I would anticipate within the next, I'm hoping for the next two weeks, so we'll know what direction we need to take.
Thank you.
I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Fitzgerald, but right now, it almost is a distinction without a difference, for the most part. This council is self-regulating in these areas. And I, you know, there have been times in the past, even in just recent years, just going back three, four, five years, when maybe a majority of council were at the highest limits of some of these expenditures.
Right.
And no one on principle was making these recommendations.
Absolutely. And these, and these won't affect any of us. These will affect current, these will affect future council members. So if the change, so if you wait to make the change until you need it, that change can't affect those people serving on council.
But my question is, why wasn't this being proposed two, three, four years ago? I certainly could have seen.
I wish it was. I wasn't here to propose it, I guess.
Well, that would virtually put us in the only category of elected officials who really aren't paid for the work that they do. And I disagree with you. I think the taxpayers should pay for the work that we do. If you're on the county board of supervisors, you get a living wage. If you're an assembly person, you are paid. And I dare say that some of us put as much work into this work on this city council as some of the city, as some of the county supervisors, who I have known in the past 20 years. In fact, I've got no doubt about that.
Yeah. And we do get paid the monthly stipend. I'm not talking about pay, I'm talking about the benefits. So those, both the jobs that you mentioned are full-time jobs?
It's a combination of both. The compensation currently is a combination of the monthly stipend plus the benefit. This council is not taking advantage of many of the benefits, with the exception that we are participating in CalPERS, which is an additional $500, less than $50 a month that adds on to the 750 we get. So you can make the distinction between the stipend, but it is a package. And I think that the taxpayers get their work out of us.
A question for Gretchen. If the PERS is, eligibility for that is taken away, wasn't there some other thing we had to go into instead?
Yes, that would be the FICA replacement plan, the defined contribution plan.
And how much does that cost?
Our current plan is, the city contribution is 3.75%, and the employee contribution equals that. So the total contribution required is 7.5%.
Of what, of what amount?
Pay. Your total pay.
So it's almost the same thing in terms of cost, if you have to do one or the other?
Correct.
Well, it seems like.
Well, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Now, our discussion has left me a little confused about item 3, because there are so many options on item 3. But I imagine we could, we could, you know, work through each item individually, if that's the preference of council.
Well, my motion is to approve option 1, 2, 3, not 3A, 3B, 3C or 3B.
3 and 4.
And to approve 4.
Okay. So it's a single motion for all 4. Okay. All right. Any final comments?
I do have a comment, since this would not apply to current council. And barring another recall, I wouldn't anticipate any change for, you know, a year and a half. There is time to think about this a little further. And I think there's a lot been said. I'd like a little more time on it myself.
This actually would apply to current council members in a new term, so.
Well, that's true, but there won't be any new terms until 2014.
Right.
If there's no further comment, we do have a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, and 4. And that's been seconded, so unless there is any further conversation on it.
Yeah, do I have public comments?
Is there anyone interested in making public comment on this? Maybe I'm prejudging here. Yes. Thank you for the catch. Yes, Jane.
Good evening, Council, Jane Rans. I think our council does deserve to be paid and have benefits. This is my biggest concern, is I want people spending their full time working on this. And if somebody has to go out to work another job, not just for an income, but also to provide, work enough hours in some other job to provide benefits, they're not going to be able to put their full effort into being on council. And that's either going to mean you're going to have a council member who's not fully dedicated, or you're going to exclude people who would otherwise not be represented on this council. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, we'll bring it back. My concern with the motion is that I could probably support option 1. But as a package, right now with the ACA impacts, the fact that we're moving fairly swiftly to solve something that isn't really a current problem, I'm afraid the way the motion is designed, that unless we could bifurcate it or something, that I probably wouldn't be supportive at this time on it. Not that I wouldn't be supportive potentially in the future, especially once we work through the budget this year. But, all right, any, no further comment? All right. So we have a motion and a second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. The motion fails 3 to 2.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept option 1.
Second.
It seems to me that this is a matter of choice, and that you are then forced into yet another thing that is just as costly. And so I don't see the point of this. Why eliminate this as a choice for council people, if that's what they want to do? As Councilmember Floria has pointed out, the benefits are very modest. Maybe that's a reason for supporting it. On the other hand, if it's not a big deal in the budget, then why not leave it alone? Speaking of the budget, maybe that's a good thing to work through before we tackle this kind of thing.
I have one question of Gretchen regarding this. This would require us creating a new plan strictly for council members of some sort?
The CalPERS would just.
Or category.
Would just require an amendment to our current plan. So what we would have is an amendment that excludes council members.
Okay. So the costs would be minimal to be able to achieve this.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, of course, understanding also that any change we make can certainly be undone by a future council, although the political effect of that is quite considerable, I think. All right, thank you. Any further comment? We do have, I think, the motion by Councilmember Fitzgerald, seconded by Councilmember Seaborn. All right. All in favor of option 1 signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
All right. Carries 3 to 2.
I'd move that we adopt option 4.
Would you consider simply allowing that to be modified, so that a council member can have the cost of those plans and apply it to something else that they might like better? It does not impact the dollar amount at all, doing that. HMOs, in my experience, are bad, and I don't like them.
Well, option 4 is just saying that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at option 3C. I apologize for that.
No, I'm sorry, I was just, I moved option 4.
I missed my target. Sorry about that.
No, not a problem. That's just saying that if you have health insurance from some other way, you will not take $100 a pay period as an opt-out.
All right. Any further comment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
It occurs to me that if we have now amended the CalPERS contract to make future council members ineligible, then we do have to take up option number 2. Because it has to be replaced with a FICA-approved program, or a FICA replacement plan.
Well, it leaves one, it leaves the defined contribution plan that council members are eligible for.
Correct. If you chose not to do option 2, then your retirement plan would become the FICA replacement plan as it exists today.
Okay.
With the 50/50 cost sharing between employee and the city.
And the cost for that would be, does somebody have a calculator? 750 times 12 times 3.75, how much does that amount to?
About $338 per year.
Okay. So, 100, oh, I see, it was on our little graph anyhow. Yeah, so it's $160 less.
But Gretchen, correct me if I'm wrong, that is assuming that the council members are paying half of the contribution, correct?
Yes, that's, this is the current plan as it exists. Option 2 would eliminate that 338 and transform the city and transfer it to the council members.
Okay. I would move option 2 with the change that, or amendment, that it would be the entire amount would be paid for by the council member. The entire, what is it, 7.5%.
I'm so sorry.
I moved second, option 2.
Yep.
Option 2 moved and seconded. Again, is everyone clear on that motion?
No, I want to agree with first.
I think the caveat was the last line, council member contributions increased from 3.75% to 7.5%, which covers the entire.
So the city would not cover any contribution at all? I don't support that. For $338 per year, per council person, that's pushing it.
I have to agree with that at this point. We're fairly splitting hairs on some of these. And with the ACA impacts, a number of other mechanics involved here makes no sense to me at present.
I would really like to wait until the ACA implications are more clarity known, and I think that will reveal itself within the next year, and then there's still time to do this before the next council term starts.
Well, but I hear you, and appreciate your comments, but the ACA has to do with healthcare reform, not with, this option 2 deals with retirement. And so what that is saying is that the council members would pay the entire portion of the retirement benefit that they get. So it doesn't have to do with the ACA.
No, I appreciate that, but I'm trying to look at the whole package, rather than just retirement and by itself. So that's where I'm at, so.
And again, I know we're not talking about significant sums of money. I'm just looking for us, in my opinion, to lead by example in being as responsive as we can. we can, so that we, you know, have real firm ground to stand on personally when we go to negotiate with folks.
At $150 a month, I think we're standing on pretty firm ground as it is. I don't support option two.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any final comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. No. Fails three to two.
And I'm going to torture you with one last motion. I move that we pass option three C and three D.
Well, I certainly support three D. I'm wondering whether option three C gives enough direction to staff to figure that If you kind of meld what Doug had to say about the HMO, he would say that, I believe that what Doug was driving at was that a council member be eligible for a benefit sufficient to cover the HMO medical and dental plans. But then if they wanted the PPO plan, that they would pay the ups for that. Was that right, Doug?
Yeah, that's correct. It's the same cost, but then at least you get a choice. When you go to an HMO, you may be losing a medical provider of 20 years or so. You know, I'd like to, myself, keep those relationships.
And, and to include family coverage, too.
Yeah, I, whatever the amount would be for the equivalent HMO cost, that that could be applied to some other plan of the councilperson's choice.
But HMO family coverage. Yeah, okay. I, I could support three C and three D.
Gretchen, were these, I see that one of them says that the, that it specifically says will not be triggered under the Healthcare Reform Act. What is that, what about three C? Is that potentially impacted by ACA?
I don't believe it would be, because you would be offering a plan, one, so you meet the eligibility, and two, if it's, if you're providing the eligibility for the HMO plan, as long as it's, the contribution isn't significantly different than what you currently have, it would also meet the affordability test.
So three C and three D, basically we wouldn't have to worry too much about ACA implications, at least on the surface?
I believe that's the case with three D as well. I, I just want to make sure that if, if we know that you have coverage elsewhere under Medicare, that even though you are an, an employee, if you meet the definition of employee under the Affordable Care Act, because you are an elected official, you would not, we would not be required to provide coverage. I think that's the possibility, but I don't have the final answer on that. But I think I could before we brought back any change to resolution 8485.
I'm willing to second it, but I am concerned that there's a possible conflict with ACA, and I assume, or I would like to address all of those at the same time, rather than pass this and after retract it and kind of go back and forth. I mean, I would imagine if we approve this, that you'll put together a, an amendment to the municipal codes, or a resolution, so that we can, again, vote on it, and at that time we can look at what the implications are. So approving it now really just authorizes staff to prepare a plan?
Correct.
Okay. In that case, I'll second it.
Could you restate the motion again? These are items three C and three D?
Option three C and three D, yes.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Any additional comment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
I'm, I'm not sure that we, where we were on three C, does that mean that the cost of those HMOs can be applied to a PPO, for example? Is that, is that included in the motion?
That's what my understanding was.
Okay.
That was, my understanding of the motion was that it did include that.
And then we're also.
Assistant Maker disagrees. That was my understanding.
And then we're also doing three D?
Yes.
Correct.
Oh, boy. I'll, I'll vote aye. Carries four to one. All right, we. I did. Yeah. Yes, I, I could be convinced of a number of these, but we're fairly piecemeal here and limited information, so it's really that process as much as.
Item number 13, Advisory Committee for the Downtown Core and Corridor Specific Plan, DPAC. Heather.
Thank you. Just a brief presentation. Your last item of this evening is both to officially form the DPAC, which is the Downtown Core and Corridor Specific Plan Advisory Committee, and make appointments to that committee. The appointed committee would serve until the completion of the project, which will be September of 2014. The applications were put out from the period of April 11th through 26th, with some pretty wide range of outreach in getting the applicants. The intent was to get representation from the geographic areas, as well as many of the constituents, from business to nonprofits, to youth to seniors, to both provide insight, their own insight, as well as be ambassadors for the project, a conduit of information to and from the various groups that they're representing. We are pleased, very pleased. We were anticipating filling 31 spots. We received 36 very well-qualified applicants in all of the areas that we were looking for, so we're actually bringing the whole slate to you with a recommendation of appointments. We do have nine neighborhood areas. Most areas have two or three representatives, and they're very well-qualified. And so those are before you on this screen. You all did receive in the reading files, the detailed applications. You'll notice that we've got a lot of unfamiliar faces, which we're very happy with. A lot of people responded that they, they saw an article, they saw the press release, they're very interested in the project, and they did apply. On the other representatives, we were looking for both representatives from the Korean and Latino community, developers, brokers, business representatives, and nonprofits, youth representatives, and PTAs. You'll notice there are several folks who are filling double duty in a couple spots, but we felt that they could represent both well. So with that, the recommendation is to both form the committee. All members did acknowledge that this is a volunteer group. There is no compensation for this committee, and that they would serve for the term of the project, which is through September 2014. And we would like to have our first meeting, which has been advertised in advance for this Thursday. And I can answer any questions.
Well, I, I will ask for public comment here, but we do have a motion and a second to approve the proposed list. So unless there are council comments, I'll ask if, if there, any member of the public wishes to, appears as though there are none, so we will bring it back. I had one question here between, on attachment one at the back. There are geographical categories, and then there are representatives of various groups. Some are duplicated, and some are not. They're not part of it. So I was wondering, as far as the makeup of this committee, is it even necessary to list the same person twice here?
Well, we wanted to identify, as an example, Kitty Harmio is both representing the geographic area in which she lives, as well as is representative of the Latino community. Also, Raul is both a Latino partner, as well as a youth representative. So there are several people, particularly in those instances where we want to have actual contacts that those communities can go to directly, we wanted to list those folks twice.
So these were self-designated as both?
For the most part, yeah. Many of them checked multiple boxes, and we tried to put them where we saw fit, so that we could make sure that all groups were representative, represented. But as you can see from the applications, many people both have a neighborhood or two, which they relate to, as well as possibly a nonprofit or the development community. There's a lot of kind of cross-representation. So although they may have a, a primary designation, so their constituents in that primary designation know who they are, they'll also be speaking for many folks as well.
Okay. Yeah, that explains it a little better for me. Thanks. All right, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilman Seaborn, you have.
Just had a quick comment. I want to thank everybody that did apply for this and, and that is willing to get involved. It really means a lot to me to see a lot of these folks on here who I know, and frankly, I didn't realize so many people I would consider friends that were paying attention and actually applied for it. So I'm, I'm very happy to see these names on here. I'm excited about what they're going to do, and I'm really, I get a good positive vibe on this.
Again, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further comment, I would ask for the question here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, unanimous. Thank you. Council and staff comment time. I don't know whether any members of, of staff wish to.
I have a quick comment for Public Works Director Hoppe. I'd received recently several inquiries from my neighbors about work that's being done on my street, and all of them were asking me, well, when is this going to take place? Because the construction signs were placed there. And the date for the time of construction was left blank. So they were kind of confused and puzzled, and they all thought I had the answer, and sadly I didn't. And, but I'm happy to report that you had the answer, and you gave me a very good dissertation about how the notification process takes place, and I was very pleased to hear that. My only note beyond that, and expressing my appreciation for your thorough response, is that maybe we can look at a way that, as a city, when we start looking at a, a area such as my neighborhood, or any, any other neighborhood, that is about to be impacted, maybe in the next three to six months, and we're pretty confident that there's, if projects can take place, we can give the residents some sort of a heads-up that, you know, this is why you're seeing these workers in the area doing things, painting the street. I mean, they know that work is coming, but they don't know when, and they may decide to not have that big summer block party in the middle of construction, or plan accordingly. Thank you.
I'd like to provide some information on the water refunds. If I'd had this information at the time we had discussed this and made a decision, I assure you I would have voted differently. What I would have advocated then, and I hope we can revisit this, is that the money go to infrastructure improvements. And I asked for some additional information as to how the refunds would actually break out. And what I learned is, the bulk water users, who get a lower rate anyway, would get very high refunds, one as high as $169,000. That contrasts with the average residential person's refund of $65. And that struck me as being very unfair, and it seemed to me that this money, when I looked at that data, would be better and more fairly spent if it went to infrastructure instead and benefited all concerned. Also, if you're serious about infrastructure, it does mean some additional rate increases. And so I look at this as kind of the, the refund as taking it back, kind of an illusion. You give it out and you immediately take it back and incur some additional costs along the way, because you did that. So when you, when you look at that and you see users who had the lower water rate anyway getting substantial refunds compared to everybody else, that strikes me as being very unfair. And I hope we can revisit this again and change that decision. And I do hope that, that you'll look at that and think it through. I've had a time to consider it, not sure whether I wanted to bring it up or just live with what happened. But the disparity is so great, between $169,000 and $65, I just couldn't live with that, so I am bringing that up again, and hoping that if you think about it, someone will agree, and we can agendize it to consider it again.
Any other council member comments? That being the case, we will adjourn the meeting.